I'd like to call the Atchison County Commission meeting for Tuesday, February fourteenth. The order. Please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under the power of individual with liberty and justice for all.
Public comment. Doesn't appear that we have any public comment. Um, conditions to the agenda. There are several additions that I will have purchase orders. And we will just go through them as we we get there. Reading an approval of minutes. Did everyone have a chance to read the minutes from last commission meeting?
I have.
Need to have the motion to approve.
I will make that motion safe.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero. Let your comments and committee reports. Eric, do you have anything?
Well, I think that all three commissioners got the memo. Uh, I want to wish the Kansas City or congratulate the Kansas City Chiefs. It's a big deal for our area. It's fantastic. It's a lot of fun and uh, it's gonna be a big deal tomorrow with the the parade and I hope everybody has a safe, fun time there. And it doesn't get out of hand because these things can, but uh, that's all the comments I have for today.
Uh, I would just comment on the uh, Commissioner Olin, I attended the Conservation District Dinner and award ceremony and uh, that was really pretty fun and kids were great and entertainment was one of the Peterson Brothers and so that was pretty fun.
Thanks.
So it's well done and uh, hats off to Tiffany and to Jeff Hale both for doing a great job out there with all that and the board.
Awesome. Um, I would just let everyone know our website, our uh, revant uh, launched last Wednesday. So um, seems that everything's going good. It's got a really good uh, fresh look, easy to navigate, um, and we look forward to hearing uh, your input and and on that. So uh, we want you to utilize the website. There's a ton of great information. Um, so play around with it, um, navigate yourself and uh, you should be able to find everything you're looking for county that has to do with county. So um, okay, the first is Wesley Inter Emergency Management IT Director with CIC Renewal Discussion and Approval.
Good morning.
Morning.
So I sent you the the purchase order for the CIC renewal. This is the yearly or this is the stock of the whole county uses in almost every office for our accounting, tracking, taxes, everything. Um, so the annual CIC people where agreement is what they call it is fifty-one thousand, three twenty-five. And that's a yearly budget expense. It did decrease from fifty-seven thousand last year to fifty-one this year because we made some changes and because of some discounts. Um, so it did decrease compared to what we normally do. Do you have any questions about it?
Changes, what kind of changes?
For example, the Register of Deeds Office switched and they went with a different software for who owns Laredo, um, so that deducted this. Um, we also were able to drop some of our server farm data storage amounts because of that. Which reduced also. And just those changes, that's it.
I noticed the date was January one. Do we need to do this this year at the end of twenty?
No, um, so the the reason the date was January one is that's where we get the invoice every year. But when I got it, we didn't have a reduction in charges and so I had to work with their administrative offices to get an updated correct invoice from them. So that's why we're just now paying it. But no, it's budgeted to come out of this year.
Okay. And then as far as the trainings or customer service they offer for our department heads, do they um, do we receive training or material to assist us?
So yes, um, they have an online class where you can watch videos and actually get screen printouts of how to to run the program if you need. And they will do anything or they would do most trains virtually for free. If we pay that or if we have them come onsite, then there is a cost that is incurred with that. Um, and then also the yearly conference that a lot of our employees go to, there's training and updates at that conference.
Awesome. Yeah, I remember everyone said last year it was great because each department was able to get their input on what they liked or needed and. Yeah.
So with this software, we do pay on the back of the invoice, you see where it says enhancements. So our software is ever changing. It's not like we bought a software that's gonna be outdated. Every year it gets enhancements and that actually comes from our employees that use it. Um, so whenever we're using the software and we're like, we wish the software would do X, Y, Z this way. And so the way it is, we submit an enhancement to their website. Um, and then the end of the year when we all go to the conference, every county has done that and we vote. Oh, that enhancement's great. We just select that one. How this one could wait till next year because we don't have enough funds to pay for, or we love this enhancement. This is, this would make our job easier. So that's why it's never changing software. And and it doesn't get outdated like other softwares where you have to, oh, we have two thousand thirteen, but now we have to buy two thousand nineteen software. It changes each year. That's what the enhancement section is for.
Awesome. We actually didn't. Can you purchase one that if uh, it's not voted on, but didn't we actually purchase some changes for solid waste?
Yes. So if there's an enhancement that we submitted and it does not get submitted or it does not get approved at the conference with everyone voting on it, then our county, which we did do because we wanted that enhancement, funded that ourselves. It was not very much thirteen hundred dollars or something like that, but.
Because we have a unique situation with a building.
With our solid waste department, we have a standalone application that we had them build custom for us. Um, but other counties don't use.
Probably been what, four years ago, I'm guessing?
Um, no, it started, uh, we started using that in sixteen.
Well done.
Whenever the tipping fee started.
No.
So whatever the tipping fee started is when we, when when we had that application built for us. Are you talking about the scale program? Cause that's a different one. That's not through CIC.
Maybe that was the last one.
Yeah, we had an extension of scale program.
Yeah.
That's, but that's not through CIC.
So is the standalone part of this invoice the standalone piece? Because once we get rid of tipping fees, then we won't have to pay for that?
Correct. Well, no. We we will be able to stop the enhancement section of it, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
The initial fee was thirteen hundred, but then there's a few. He's going.
There's a yearly.
Okay.
Pay for licensing. Yep.
Yeah.
And that is on here. Uh, is called the balance forward statement. CIC custom balance forward statement. Costs us five hundred and twenty-five a year. And I don't think we pay enhancements on that. Oh, we do. One fifty, yep.
On that, I don't think I would grow up that until we've had a discussion with solid waste about.
Correct.
I mean, cause there could be other things that are attached, not just to tipping fee, but they might use that for um, uh, maybe the, when somebody tears a house down and they uh, zap.
Send out invoices. If you're still gonna charge for that, then she'll need to retain that program.
So we don't wanna just drop it because we're dropping tipping fees. There might be other applications it's being used for.
Right.
So we don't wanna just drop that without having a discussion, make sure that we, it's not needed elsewhere.
No, absolutely. It was just posed that it was standalone based on tipping fees.
Right. Absolutely. I'm just thinking through what what we're saying here. So just to make sure that we don't.
If you're still in charge for C and D, then yeah, you should need to have an invoicing program to do so.
Well, I think CIC is a good choice. I know the department heads have enjoyed that conference last year. Um, several counties are actually switching to CIC currently, so um, I would look for a motion to approve the CIC Annual Peopleware Agreement in the amount of fifty-one thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars. That will come out of the IT general budget.
Summon.
Okay.
I'll say it.
Then moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Will you just send out a reminder to our department heads about those online videos and virtual trainings if anybody needs a refresher? Thank you. Hey, we're ahead of schedule, but are you? Are you? Yep, Rogers here, uh, the GIS coordinator to discuss a nine-one-one address with us.
You pick one of those messages now. Um, Happy Valentine's Day, everyone.
Thank you.
I am going to uh,
I assume the registered chiefs have been thinking about. I'm single.
But what I'm doing this morning and I'm, hey, let me make sure that I get my screen shared out so that everyone can see what we're doing. We should get it set up. All right, well, what I'm, what I'm here to do and and again, I'm not asking for anything. Um, I serve in a capacity to serve a lot of different departments. Um, as such, there are a number of things that the GIS department does that just deal with a lot of things. And my history also opens you up to a lot of other things that I've done over the years. Now, what I am gonna do is I'm I'm speaking in generalizations as I threw this together this morning to show you. Uh, the the talk should all be there in my head, but the illustration I'm not gonna tell you is marvelous. What I am gonna tell you is it's putting a bunch of pieces together. And I think this is information that you will find very handy moving forward. While I say this, I'm not a lawyer. But what I, and and that means that many things I say could be argued with. They could be wrong. But generally, they're the correct things, just like when I'm dealing with the Register of Deeds Office or anyone else, I always say there are three basic kinds of surveys. Well, surveyors would argue there's way more than that. But generally, there's locational surveys which show existing facilities and where they're located, either on paper or in the field. There are plat of surveys which create new parcels by description, but don't actually physically make the parcels unless they're used on another document. And then there are plats and plats actually break up properties. They are acknowledged by the owner and accepted by the governing body. They can have dedications for public things and they can also, and they will also break the property into those tracks which they create. The same thing I'm gonna tell you is true with this and and those are the basic three and that's what we look for. Now, the beginning of the road system and I'm and I'm gonna tell you just a little about roads because we've had discussions on the roads in the last week. Uh, basically, back in the beginning, uh, there are three ways that roads were created. And I have down plats petitions in public, meaning they, the the three basic ways that they happened is they might have been platted. And by the way, the city of Atchison's basic, what we call Old Atchison, which is the original town flat, was filed in eighteen fifty-three. Now, Kansas was not even an state until eighteen sixty-one. So um, these are fairly old. But what it does is it dedicates those streets to public use and it creates those streets and it named those streets as the owner of the property who was developing it wanted those streets named. That's where those street names come from in the city of Atchison or on platted property. Petitions. Uh, the county would allow landowners to petition for improvements. And we see those all the time. And when we're looking in old road records, that's what we're looking at is we're looking at a group of owners might get together. They might bring in a petition that says we'd like this road created in this area. They needed to control at least fifty-one percent of it to bring it in. Didn't mean everyone that was gonna be on that road was in favor of it. But then the commission would appoint a viewer to go out and take a look at it. They'd appoint. If they thought it was worth doing, they'd, they'd send a surveyor out. They'd look at uh, what the value of the takings were gonna be that would create that road and then they would come back and they could uh, create by resolution, either adopt that road and put the width of it was gonna be and where it was supposed to go. Or they could ignore it and then it went away. And so when we're searching road records, that's always what we're looking for. Public. And what I mean by that is the county, the city, the uh, the state, the townships. Everyone has a right to initiate road development. So for instance, Highway fifty-nine uh, is one of those things that where it's cutting out across properties. That's not something somebody brought in in a plat or as a petition. That is something that at some point the state said for the speed of the highways and the safety of the public, we want the road to go in this location. And then they move through the creation of those roads in that manner. Now, depending on exactly how they were created and whether the land was through a taking, which is a condemnation, or through a mere uh, purchase, then the future of those lands would fall into different hands. So I'm just telling you that has to do with road creation. Now, we get people who come into the county all the time and say, hey, can I get a roadmap that has all the old original names on it? And the answer is no. The old original names were numbers. They were numbered sequentially as they came in with a petition. So there were no names on those roads, but names like Potato Hill, Country Club Road, those were acquired over time because of what the people called them. As a matter of fact, I can tell you when I went to school at Bellevue, uh, if you ask where the landfill was, it was about a mile west of McAdouse Corner. And and you look at that and go, where the heck is McAdouse Corner? Cause it wasn't on any map. But we just knew where Gander's Corner and McAdouse Corner were, right? And the, that's the way things went for years. And so when, when we say those weren't official road names, they weren't. They didn't show up on maps anywhere. They weren't part of anything. Now, responsibilities. Who was responsible? Well, basically, when I started here, nobody knew who was responsible for what roads. And you might think, well, that's crazy. They should know. Well, they knew a core and the people who worked at New Core, but there was no database that said these roads belong to the county and these belong to which township. And you would go, well, it ought to be clear township lines are there. Yes, but there are roads that lie on the boundaries of townships and they've worked out agreements whereby one not written agreements, personal agreements between one trustee and another that says we'll maintain this one if you maintain that one. But it wasn't written down anywhere. So what we have done is gone back through to get those all written down. Now, the two kinds, and I'm, I may be reiterating a little of what you already know. But counties either fall into county maintenance or county township maintenance. There was a point in time where the state set up a program and said, you know, counties, it should be a lot easier if you handled all the roads. However, the K dot has told us uh, there's about seven counties who didn't go along with that. Atchison was one of them. We still have townships. But they say if the others could go back, they would. Because it got way more expensive when the county took it over. So we have counties and townships. There was no database or there was no contract that said they maintain these and you maintain those. Uh, so we started going through the nine-one sys, nine-one-one system at some point in history. Uh, our nation said, hey, we needed a nine-one-one system. So in nineteen sixty-seven, nineteen sixty-eight, they did a study and then adopted a nine-one-one system. Uh, over the next few years, as you can see in in seventy-nine, there was twenty-six percent on it by eighty-seven. Uh, fifty percent of the country was on a nine-one-one system. So you could just dial nine-one-one and get into the system. Now, when that occurred, there was a system developed called the MSAG. The MSAG is the Master Street Address Guide. Now you would ask, what is the Master Street Address Guide? Well, how do they know when you call nine-one-one where to send the people? There's no GIS out there in nineteen seventy-nine, nineteen eighty-seven, and I'm gonna tell you, there was no Geo database to run this system in two thousand and ten. The only place it was really occurring is in a couple of cities around the country and on CSI Miami. What would happen is you would make a nine-one-one call. It would go to the MSAG database. It would say that person bought their phone from this company. They lived at this address and it would send, it would send them to that location. So if you weren't home, once you got a cellphone, if you weren't home, it's not send, it's send them to your house. And you would say, oh, that's stupid. Well, it is, but it was all they had. It's all they had and in nineteen ninety-four, um, you had recently enacted or were looking at, uh, there were problems with going on with road names and addresses and knowing where to go with things. Now, keep in mind when they when they approved plats, they had names for the plats and so cities had addresses. So the city of Atchison was all addressed out. Atchison County had no addresses. Now, how would that work? Well, the reality was the postman knew uh, that my family lived on rural route number four and he knew where we lived. My address was, you know, Denton's at rural route number four until we were annexed into the city when then it became fourteen oh nine Country Club Road. That was very, very common. In ninety-four, emergency preparedness came to the county and said, you gotta have some road name. You've got to have something that's consistent throughout the county and the county passed at that time and we can get you a copy, but they passed a resolution that said we're gonna establish good road names for all of our roads and we're gonna make some addresses so that people know where to go. And it was, it was the beginning of the county addressing system. Okay, so we've moved about halfway through this and this is a chronological chart that I'm showing you here. Okay, and so we've gotten to the beginning of county addresses. Now, nothing works right along. Things take time and the city at that time was running uh, the emergency preparedness and the ambulance system, I believe. And I don't know all the details, but I do know there was a lawsuit because they didn't get to a place on time. It took them to the wrong address or it took them down a wrong road or something. This was not just happening in Atchison. It was happening all over the country that you had all these addressing systems that were uh, if you said, hey, we can get there in five minutes and you went down the wrong road or you tried to take a mud road and the ambulance got stuck or or let's say there were three places that had that address listed to them. Or the address was for this household, not this household. Or it was a household location, but the people were out in the field. Those things all created lawsuits and lawsuits cost money. And so what happened is in nineteen ninety-nine, the state of Kansas developed what they called addressing standards. And they adopted those dressing, addressing standards. And they thought this will help fix the thing so that there's a standard that everyone can use to pick up addresses. Well, here's the problem. If you look at that box down below, the post office issued addresses, the appraisers issued addresses, the utility companies, the water, the gas, the electric issued addresses. The telephone company was still issuing addresses because they were still creating the MSAG. And by the way, they weren't getting all the information from all the other people. And then you had voter registration who was issuing addresses too, cause all you had to do is walk in and say, I'm at this location. And uh, they registered you into vote. And so the problem is you had all these different addressing systems and this is just a part of them. When I say post office, there's like five post offices in our jurisdiction. And they're all doing this and they were all doing this. And so you had this massive addresses out there that didn't coincide with each other and there wasn't. Uh, when you got sent on a nine-one-one call, it may say, gee, we don't have a clue where that is because it isn't in our system. So in two thousand and eleven, they developed what they called the nine-one-one Coordination Council. The nine-one-one Coordination Council looked at the standard, said, here's what it is. And then they started working with how do we make all the counties get along with this? And how do we force the state to make sure that all the counties are getting along with this system? So at that time, about that time, we were using a group called GEOCOM. And GEOCOM was out of, I think Minnesota or someplace. Okay, and GEOCOM was charging the county around fifty thousand dollars a year to run the dispatch computer system so that when a call came in, it went to this. Um, it is not, was not running off of Geo data. It was still running completely off the MSAG. Um, and those, they were still dealing with multiple addresses. Well, in about two thousand and fourteen, the state said we gotta get these address systems cleaned up. So they came in to all the counties in the state of Kansas and they hired consultants to take all these addressing systems and bring them all together and eliminate duplicates, get rid of all the bad addresses, but get all the addresses into one. Now, you would think, oh, that's great. Then, then they paid the contractor around fifty thousand dollars per county to do that. So it was a real lucrative situation for those GIS people. Uh, and you would think, oh, this would work great. Well, the problem is they're looking at aerial photos from Minnesota and they're picking out every barn shed. Uh, and we ended up with gobs of addresses that shouldn't have been on there. And we end up with gobs of addresses that didn't end up on there because some people live in stuff that we would think is less notable than a barn. And so they needed to be in the system and they may not have been and to and prior to, and this, this stuff all started about the time we're starting our development permit. Uh, nobody was telling us what they were building. And so we were just out there working with it. Well, since two thousand and fourteen, we have spent a lot of time doing cleanup. And they've also, this nine-one-one council also developed a maintenance requirement. So every year, maintenance and service checks have to be run on your system. And that has to be verified to the nine-one-one council or they send someone out and force us to pay for having the thing brought up to date. Is that a fair statement? Okay, and so now, what I want to tell you is this isn't all written down in a book somewhere. This is the closest it's come to being shown somewhere and and there are other things. There are always unintended consequences of our actions. So here we are, we're sitting, working along with the nine-one-one system. We think we've got it done. Well, they have worked this all across. And then one day I'm down talking to the city and saying, well, how do you get your addresses in the nine-one-one system? And they're going, what? Um, they weren't putting them in at all. So when they issued permits, they weren't going in the system at all. It's just all of those pieces have to be done. And so now every time they issue one, they send it to me and I make sure it gets in the system and I have an address notification group that includes all of those people on that list down below. People in the county, the city of Atchison and uh, all of the post offices in our, in our jurisdiction. Okay? Now those are all going in there. Then shortly after we started doing all of that, then the marker issue came up and we've started issuing markers for all the locations. Now, we're talking about uh, issuing those markers. The original creation back in ninety-four did say everyone's property had to be marked, clearly marked. Um, those are just a part of what goes on. Just recently, uh, probably I want to say a couple of years ago, we switched over from GEOCOM running our data system over to Mark. But now with, with the state of Kansas and their next generation nine-one-one system, it doesn't send you, we still have an MSAG. We still maintain the MSAG. I am guessing it will eventually go away, but when you make a phone call, if it can, it's paying off a towers and when it does, it's grabbing data and saying this is what's related to it and it uses Geo database information that we feed to Mark to make that system operate and then sends that to the officer in the patrol car or in the sheriff's vehicle. And at that time, if we, if we give them the owners of the properties, where the legal access roads are, you know, we might sit there and go, well, roads, how does this work? Um, if it's a driveway, shouldn't we be showing it? And my thing is if I'm a police officer or a sheriff's deputy, I want to know whether it's a public road or a private driveway when I'm driving down. I would just soon know that information. Now, let me also say that in the process of doing all of this and cleaning up the names and making sure that everything is working right, we also created what we called center line files. And those center line files have the center of every road on them. And every road has address ranges on it. Now, one of the things that are standards of the council is that that center line has an address range. And it will say what the addresses are on the right side and the left side in the direction of travel. And you would say roads don't have direction. Well, they do for numeric increase. And so if you live on, in the city, they travel one direction. In the county, they travel different directions. And so when you look at that, if you have a house number that doesn't fit the profile of that center line, we're gonna ask you to change. Because when a vehicle goes there, it's not gonna look there. And one of the things that we do also, and you've heard me say this, is we require a market site to issue addresses because we get people who will have a hundred and sixty acres, they're on three roads and they want an address. Well, where do you issue it? Well, if you issued on the road on the north side, they're gonna end up building on the south. And then we've got a. Well, if you issued on the road on the north side, they're gonna end up building on the south. And then we've got a problem. Cause nobody wants to change it later. So there are all of these issues we deal with. And so when we're doing, uh, and I know I've taken just probably a little longer than I needed to, I hope this has been informational.
No, very much.
Can I answer any other, any questions about this?
Well, you're probably never getting caught up, so to speak, but are we in a lot better shape than we used to be as far as the city area, the city all caught up with addresses is?
Oh, we're in, we're in. We're actually in very good shape. We still find one occasionally that we say, how does this happen? And, and to give you examples, for instance, uh. Potter used to be a city. Uh, it's, the subdivision is called Bennett Springs. But there's a second street in Potter and a second street in Ashes. So when you get a call for a second street, when it was Potter, it had its own post office. And it had a community name of Potter, but now that it's under, uh, six, six, oh, oh, two, it has the action address. So when you get an address to go to one oh six North Second Street, where are you going? You're going to Ashen, you're going to Potter? And you would go, wow, that's a good question. Where? Well. Let me tell you how crazy this gets, is the fact that when we do names, it's not just a matter of having a simple name. The name, for instance, Second Street. If I've got a one oh nine North Second Street, is it two N D? Is it two? Is it spelled out second? How is it? Because when we're geocoding, it wants to look at it and it wants to say, this matches with this. And when we're talking voter registration. If they get somebody who signs up and says, yeah, I'm at, uh, well, one oh nine North Second Street and they spell it out. And it's supposed to be two N D, it's not looking at it in the same location. So part of what we're trying to do and we're working with, uh, with them also, we run systems known as geocoding systems. We create address locators and then it will take a look and it says, all of these addresses fit nicely. These, we can tell where they probably should go and these, we haven't a clue where they should go. And so we can fix other things. The other thing that we're trying to do in here so that you would know is it's easy. Somebody walks in, they're gonna vote or register. Or they're telling you where to send their tax statement. They give you an address. We're using, we're trying to insist that every department check. The nine one one address. On a web map. Before you say, okay, that's good. And the reason why is if they put down a bad address. We've just got a bad address in the system that's not in the nine one one system. And all it takes is one of those where somebody thinks they're in the system and they're not. So, so think about it. It is, it's come way forward, but it's still got its little glitches and it's just. Uh, a chore to get there.
So the rural routes are the addresses based on the location of the driveway and not the house?
They're actually located, we wanted to send, uh, the locational system, we wanted to send it to the, to the driveway. And so it's based on where the driveway enters the property.
And that's a reason to not move your nine one one sign off of the driveway site. Onto the, maybe where the mailbox is or which has been happening. So may I want people to realize the importance of. That, you know, it's locating the driveway. And so if they're not identifying the driveway, it's creating a, another problem.
Now, the, the small issue there is, uh, when these people are driving along, looking for the address, they're looking at the driveway. And if there's four people in there from that same driveway, they need to get in the driveway and to find out where the house is. If in fact, those are setting back on the houses, they may not even see them and know to go in that driveway. So traditionally, we're trying to put those right at the road so that, that's where the vehicles know where to go. That's how we're actually trying to issue the addresses, but, um, we use some scrutiny. And, and keep in mind, um, in the old days. You had people just handing out addresses willy nilly. And I say that, I don't, I don't mean to make that sound bad, but they really didn't care. Um, and some of them are just a bit off. If they're not too far off, we don't want, we don't want to force people to change. And so we work around things. We try and adjust as we can. And, and we adjust centerlines and we break lines and we make all of those. But we work continuously now with Mark to make sure that all of these addresses are getting in there properly. And when they don't. If Kim ever gets an address up, uh, Kim is our PSAP, or what they call the PSAP, which is the professional in charge of. The nine one one system. Um, if she sees one that's not there. Kim's firing an email to Wes and I saying, these, this address is not looking clean. Uh, tell me where this is. And, and we just had one of these last week and Jack and I said, well. I said, Jack, didn't we send them that information? And he goes, yeah, we did. We cleaned that all up and sent it to him and. And sure enough, they were having a problem on their end and they didn't have everything else. So again, we're continually looking, continually cleaning. And it's, it's just, and it's awkward. You will have facilities, um, that may have ten buildings. But they only want one address. Uh, let me give you another example, Saint Pat's, uh, for years. Uh, they've got a church and a parish, uh, and a, uh, parsonage. And we had addresses on both of them. And actually Saint Pat's came in and asked us to remove the church's address. Because people would address mail to that location. And when they got there, the mail was undeliverable. They'd take it back to the station and that mail would never make it. And they wanted only a mailbox on the house and not on the church itself. Now, they were close enough that we could address the house. And if there was gonna be a fire, when they got there, they'd see the church on fire or they. Have someone directing it. But you just run into a lot of little nuances on things like that.
Have you signed an address to say someone, same driveway and the same owner of the property build a second house? Next door, but maybe it's a half mile onto a private property. How is the second house or the new house. Address differently than the first? If, if you're using the. Driveway location for, for the address.
Well, if one is a little right and the other one's a little bit left, what we're gonna do is we're gonna separate them by a couple of numbers. And, and make it that way. And when I say a couple of numbers, it can't be by one number because odds are on one side and evens are on another. And that's one of the standards we have to adhere to. But we look for ways to make that occur correctly.
I was just kind of curious how that worked because, you know, it, there's criteria and I just wondered what that was.
You're absolutely correct. And that's why it, it, it takes a hair of common sense also what we're doing in this.
Um, if someone's still in need, the driveway marker, do they contact you for that?
Uh, they can contact me or they can actually, if they get a hold of Wes.
Email or phone or what's the best, either one. And your phone number is just for record, so if anybody needs it.
Oh, just the office nine one three eight zero four six one three one.
Okay, or W Lander at A T C O K S dot one, so. Um. What about the two hundred and fifty dollar, uh, fee? I'm just bringing this up for your input. So within my two years here, we've talked through that. Um, I know what we're really trying to do is encourage everyone to fill out a lifetime management application for any work done in the county. Um, do you think that? The fee hinders the driveway, um. Permit and then going through the process. Um, because again, the goal is to get everybody doing this. And if they feel like they're, um. Avoiding this piece to not have the fee. Um, should the fee be something that the county, cause the county had taken care of everyone that currently has an address. It's just for new businesses. I would just like your input on that, cause it's been questioned to me and why and.
Well, we charge nothing for the permit. It's, uh. We have very few fees associated with it, but what I'm also gonna tell you is that, that. When you're building new or creating new, there are usually some fees associated and most people expect those. There are more people surprised at the fact that we don't charge for the original permit than normal. Uh, should we just give them away? I can't tell you, but what I can tell you is if we decided not to charge now. What are we gonna do with all the people been paying for the last two or three years? Uh, I think we'll have some unintended consequences with that. So, uh, my point is. I would have a tendency to say unless there is a compelling reason, let's continue doing what we're doing. And so I hope that makes sense.
It totally does.
And, and, and you know, Kim and Wes might give you a different opinion on that. I'm just in that frame of mind saying. Uh, the one place we have them held pretty tight is if they need an address, they kind of kind of have to come see us.
Right, so I think Joe.
Another, the other thing on that part is if you don't charge the speed, then road and bridge is expected, you'll pull this up for nothing.
Yeah.
And I don't, I mean, up for nothing, but I mean, we're expected to do that. So we're incurring another expense that we're gonna have to budget for. If that's how it's gonna work.
Right, well, and that's another conversation of, should that be on your task list or not? And rewind conversations, you know, everything changes and workloads and, and staffing and all the things. So that might be something we want to look at too, just the process of it. And whether that should fall under road and bridge or fall under another department. But I appreciate your input very much. Yes, those are the questions we get.
Before, before we move on, this tangentially touches upon, uh, another topic for this afternoon. And you had asked the question about, uh, or you had addressed anyway that some counties are under a township road system. And some are under a county road system and then there's hybrid road system. And we're under the township road system. And under the township road system, there's division of maintenance responsibilities. So in general, the more major roads should be the county's responsibility and the real minor roads would be township responsibilities. And, uh, we have an issue on Elm Drive that. Was added to the county system a year ago. And, um, the maintenance of that road. And so this afternoon, um, there's a resolution regarding. Um, that Elm Drive and I think one of the issues is that we do not have a county wide. Listing of every road and how it's classified. Now, K Dot did a study and they did a classification for us and that's the classification system that we typically use, right? And, um. So, uh, anyway, um. We will be asking this afternoon for a declaration that Elm Drive is a minor, a very minor road. And so literally a block, block long and that would make it under the. The purview of the.
Township.
Of the township. And I don't know that it's necessary, except it does give us one simple place to look. If somebody's saying, well, prove to me that this is not the county's responsibility or that it is the township's responsibility.
And at some point, what should occur, um, for about. I would easily say six or eight years now, we have been going to the township meetings and asking for clarifications. And, and most of you have heard me there saying, you've done a good job. You got me all of this stuff, but we still have these questions. And we still, we've worked it out to where we now have ninety eight percent of them in a database, in a geodatabase on our map. And we have created a web map for it so that you can see which ones are whose responsibility. The other thing, and we are gonna want to come back to you with a resolution that says. These roads, or I would think you would want one that says that these roads belong to these entities. And just accept that entire list, uh, and who they belong to. Um. The other thing, the way I use the term road and the way some people use the term road are very different. I look at a road as the right of way. Many people look at the road as the driving surface. When we create a road, there are. And, and I don't want to say a couple. I don't want to say a few, I don't want to say quite half, but there are a lot of roads out there that have no improved driving surface in them. Uh, that's, I think that's a very fair statement, isn't it? That, that there is nothing but a right of way. It's never even used by anyone.
Maybe just platted is all.
Well, maybe it's platted, maybe it's not even platted, maybe it was created and then abandoned, but they never came back and actually did a vacation. And, and the problem with those is that, and, and I'm not saying to get rid of them. But people come in and they ask us all the time. I would say ten percent of the work we do next door is road record research. And people find out that there was a township road there and all of a sudden they want it improved so they can build in that area. The, as a general rule, they are going to be required to bring it to standard before. The township will take over or the county will take over the maintenance of that right of way if it is their area of responsibility. So, uh, don't think that just because there's a road there, it's somebody, it's, it belongs to one of these. There are a number of right of ways out there that have no roadway, surface roadway in them. And those don't consider that they're, they're ripe for maintenance because they are not. They have to be created first and the people who want them in are gonna have to create them. Unless you change the rule.
I've found, uh, a lot of people think that since we're not zoned, that there are no rules. They, they, they make that quick leap that it's like, well, rules, what, we're not zoned. Immediately they'll come up with that. And I said, well, there's rules, but you know, it's not to that stricter standard that we associate with, uh, zoning. Uh, and, and that applies with, and, and when you start visiting with them. Well, they know that we, they are responsible for septic systems and they kind of know this. You know, on one hand, they, they're quick to say, well, there's no rules, but then they know that there are, but I think they're trying to avoid it. And I, I don't, I just want to point that out that people need to check before they build. It goes quicker they find out and get these things done, it could save them a lot of money as far as relocating. Things and, and not living in a floodlot, so.
And I, and I must say, for every person who loves that we don't have rules. There is a person who hates that we don't have rules because they've just made a mistake. Or just found something else that's gone on that's created them a problem, so.
Well, and I think that.
We just see both sides.
It's a, it's awesome to sit on this side and see the examples that we run across because then it's easier to explain to people like the rules. Aren't to hinder, the rules are to help. And if we work with one another through the minimal rules that we do have. It can prevent any discussion of further, you know, it's just like. Work together on the few things that we do have in place because it prevents time, energy, mistakes. You know, redoing and, and just really showing that like, we want to help you. We, we don't have these rules in place to. To be a pain in the neck for you. Like it's, it's to help and to guide you and to, and to explain to you some of the things we've learned. By going through it. So just really letting, letting the public know that.
We've got examples where somebody builds a barn and a right of way. And then when, it, it's just not a problem because they built it with cash, but when they're ready to sell it. It's a real issue to the people who are trying to borrow the money to buy it. So.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
It was good.
Hey, I hope this was helpful.
It was very. Okay.
Oh. I'll get my screen out of there.
Okay, I, I'm going, well. So I think I made a mistake, but, um, Monica had wanted to get on the agenda, um, after Roger. But I, we will need, um, an executive session and I know it's farther down in our. In our, um, agenda, is it okay to just pop into one? Right now. Okay.
Yeah, that's okay.
Okay, how long do you think you'll need? Ten, okay. Okay, I move that the board of county commissioners recess into executive session at ten fifty AM. To discuss personal matters of not elected personnel as allowed by K S A seventy five dash forty three nineteen B one. And that the purposes of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee. The board will come out of executive session in ten minutes at eleven AM in the commission room basement of the courthouse. Those present will be the three commissioners and community corrections director.
So we need. And you didn't mention. I didn't.
No, I was looking, so I was looking up there for Dougie, but she's, no, so.
Okay.
Okay, second.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor?
I'm sorry.
I. All right, well, we are back from executive session, um. Eleven AM, Brian was gonna come before us with the construction update and costs, he wanted to visit with us, so he's ready for that. I'm just letting him know to come on in. Yeah. Y'all are just. Think that they thought that they couldn't, I was like, oh no, you just come on in with them. Hey, Kim, could you tell Brian we're ready for him? He's in the office. He went in the office.
Yeah, the retrieval.
Okay, well, so the the attachment didn't, so I asked for the link for the video. I need a one with that, I'm sorry, I didn't realize that it, no, your car, I was trying to download the Adobe, it was saying I needed, but I still couldn't get it to work. Okay.
All right.
Let's roll down, I guess, what I'm doing first, uh trying to finish up the county attorney's office, got a little bit of trim to do up there. On the initial. Part of that office and uh then I'm gonna move back into the assistant and the county attorney's office. Uh those offices will go a lot faster because of the prep that we've done on the first offices. And uh moving power and stuff ends, all that. And I'm getting bids for the cutting of the door and the window. Uh they should be in by next week for the appraiser and the treasurer's window. Uh approval on the treasurer's window has already been given. Uh the doorway has not been given yet, I think they're having some issues with the marble on the inside. What we're gonna do with that, uh taking that off, so. Uh and then I'm also getting bids to tear it out and put the beams in in case the timing wise. We can't handle doing that quick enough for them, so we'll get bids on that too. As far as the window for treasures, we we need ideas from them and uh different things on what they wanna put in there. Because we can't really get bids for it unless we know exactly what they want, so. Those things still need to be, you know, more information for that, for me to get it done.
There'd be a handicap.
And so what, we're kinda coming up with ideas for them, and you know, once we get a whole package together and they say, oh, we like this. Then we can go for more definite bids, they are saying that sometime towards the end of March. Or the middle of March is when they wanna go up there, that's their slower time, so we're trying to work all that in at that time. Uh on the tree, on the uh appraiser. I would like to go ahead and I've got that here somewhere, now handy twenty of that.
Thank you.
And uh that's from Brooks Plastering, who is going to, that is uh the same people that I use for the health department. To uh do the drive it down there on the health department, they will come in and do that wall that is paneling. Where we're gonna take the window out and move the door. Uh they will come in and plaster that for me for that price. I don't wanna. I don't, I can't do it for that, I don't think anybody can do it. But they're gonna do it for that, and they they I they always hold good to their word when they're doing work. They did great down at the health department for us, so when he says that this price is only good in cold weather. So this week he would tell me, no, I'm not coming, you, I can't do that. Next week when it gets cold or something, then he'll come and do it, so this price only holds up to let him do it during when he can't work outside.
And that'll be within the next few weeks.
If you approve that, if you tell me to go ahead and tell him, yes, let's move on, then what I would do is take the window out, frame it in. Uh move the door and say, hey, we're ready for you this weekend.
This is within, yes, your spending authority, and I would take your recommendation.
That's a good.
Absolutely, so I would get that scheduled as soon as you can.
I don't need a fax, but you.
Yeah, I can, yeah, so um even though it's not, we're gonna require a purchase order to be approved. It's uh with our Brooks Plastering LLC, Saint Joseph's Missouri for twenty-four hundred dollars. So, and the spending authority is twenty-five, so he's fine as a department head to move forward with your recommendation.
And then the next thing, just to keep moving, uh is uh. I'm working on the ceiling in the jail and the kitchen, so we had a fire uh martial inspection. That uh listed a couple of things, one was the ceiling, a couple of other things were the boiler. And we've gotten the boilers taken care of, uh the only thing I've got left is to uh do a new ceiling in the kitchen. And that material is dropped, I I'm hoping to get that put in this weekend. Or this week.
What do you mean drop?
Uh the material's here, it's at the shop, so we have the material.
No, I thought you meant it was maybe like discontinued.
No, and then on a.
Before you move on. Yeah, I caught that.
I know it.
That you you.
Well, the reason is, we need the kitchen to be closed down, so this can't be during working hours, so this has to come after hours.
I just need to note that you go above and beyond for all of us, all of the time. And it's very appreciated and somewhat unnoticed because you do these things.
That was a Freudian slip, I mean, we can say weekend, this week, sometimes.
Oh, I didn't catch that. That's, we need, we need that letter.
Yeah, well, she she won't even let me have a watch, she told me she'd send me to work and they'd send me home, I didn't even know what time it was. Okay, and another thing was a safety inspection, we got grates for the tower and carpet in the tower. So those two projects are moving on to and uh should be done within the next couple of weeks. And that should uh clear us up over there. Uh I'm also working on tomorrow, I've got a couple of interviews for help, hope that goes well and uh we get some help back in here. To help with some of that stuff. Our boiler system, after we put in those uh. Automatic feeders for the chemicals seem to be doing very well. I haven't heard that massive hammering, uh there's still a little bit of air every now and then when it's coming back down or something. Uh lines seem to be doing well on that, and so I think that was a very good thing there. And uh we've been, our chemicals been checking out really good for it, so we'll keep that going on that. I need to know, I've got a contract on the boiler, here we've got one at Senior Village. We do not have a maintenance contract on Memorial Hall. Is that something that I need to pick up on my budget? It's kinda gotten tossed around back and forth, and I I just don't know, is that something that I should just go ahead and pick up and put?
I mean, this contract just on the boiler.
It's on the boiler, so what that allows for is emergency calls.
Right.
Uh we break down, and I don't know if you guys were aware of it, when I was gone, we had an emergency call here. And they came in and you haven't seen a bill for that because we pay that contract. So that's very nice to get that in, it's not always gonna be a time when they come and not have to, you know, charge us for parts, but that time was.
And what is the, what would be the ballpark figure?
About fifteen, seventeen hundred dollars a year.
A year to pick up.
All three locations?
Well, it's each location, so ours is that, and then, yeah, and we get that out of them, they come in, they strip that boiler down, they clean it. In the, and the, into the season, and then at the start of the season, they come in, they check it all over, they start it up, they run it. And they check the chemicals and put us online.
Yeah.
So they do all that for us in that amount and then come for different things during the year to.
How does that boil her?
That one, that down there, I'm not sure on the date on that one, these here are newer, so.
Yeah, I know, renovation work was done down there, was that part of that or not?
I don't think so, I I it doesn't look like it's been done.
He's only about three or four years old.
Down at Memorial Hall?
Memorial Hall, no.
Yeah, here, yes, I think it's at least ten or so years, uh doesn't look very new at all. So it, you know, that's one of them things, but if I, if you want me to take that out of my budget, I believe there's enough that. We can go ahead and just put it on there, but I don't know if, I don't wanna take it out of my budget if they've got it in their budget. So it's really unclear what I take care of down there and what they take care of.
I thought we were kind of moving, oh, let that kinda be its own.
Well, and so let me ask that question though, because they are county facilities. And do we get a price break by having all three locations on one contract? Because it would be.
We can all dashboard, I mean.
I'm just wondering, like, if there's an incentive, because otherwise, yes, for for keeping it simplified, to have Senior Village take care of Senior Village Boiler. You know, but if there's a incentive, that way, I mean, when you, when you're at the facility, it's top of mind to know, hey, I need. You know, and they build the relationships with who to talk to and all of the things.
And that was where it was so important with Senior Village, to get somebody that would come at three o'clock in the morning and show up for me. And uh since I've got that working relationship with them there, then they followed through here and have done great. Uh I don't know that they'd give us a price break, but they might. I think those contracts, uh they pretty well do and uh fulfill enough work to get that money out of each one. But we can always ask, you know, and find out, and I will. But uh as far as whose uh budget it comes out of, that's one thing that I really think that we need to get that contract on down there. Before something happens.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, it needs to be covered, and then we can work out how.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean.
Challenge is to me, like, if you're the landlord, you you should probably pay for the new boiler.
Yep.
That people, at least it, you know, so a lot of these will say, you take care of the maintenance. Problem with this is, it's not taking care, we're gonna end up on the.
Absolutely.
Big, big expense, so.
And it's one of those things, Memorial Hall's been one of my things to try and figure out. I've I've went down and actually done the cleaning myself down there, and for what they're asking for. Uh many can't be done in an hour and a half, there's no way.
I, and I think it's ridiculous that we are providing cleaning for Memorial Hall, because I'm one that I go there for events, my kids play sports. People bring in their drinks, and even though it says no food or drinks, their french fries, I mean, it's a mess.
It's it's a workout.
And it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be our county maintenance having to clean up their mess.
I agree.
That's on you guys, when you tell me to quit, I quit, all right, good.
Yeah, the same thing, we're doing the, uh, we do still do open the doors up for them. Yeah, I would, I I feel comfortable telling it's time for them to do it.
Yeah.
We need to send them a thirty day notice thing or something, whatever it takes, be fair about it, but.
Okay, yeah, one less thing off your plate, because they're running programs, they should clean up after themselves.
They'll, they'll be more diligent.
There's, yeah, and there's no, nobody watching down there or observing the kids. I mean, there were kids in the hallway picking the plaster off the, and it's all over, yeah, and breaking. All the things, you probably know the list better than I do, I mean, what I witnessed. Well, they're, they're running a program down on the floor, but there's kids and people running them up, I mean, it's.
Yeah, it's not, not a seven in the morning, no.
No, in the evening.
The morning walkers aren't a problem, I'm sure.
Oh, no, they're not taking the plaster off.
Pretty rowdy ones. Okay, next thing I'm doing is putting up signs at the uh corrections, uh they've got new signs, so I'm in the process putting them up. Uh lights at the health department, we've done some, and we're doing, I, we've got a few more to do. And we're changing them out to the LEDs because a lot of them have went out, so.
Okay, well, we're in the health department, I think that, have you been on the roof and looked at that roof?
We have spotted it several times, uh what we're doing is flyovers with the drones. Uh we, I go into the second floor and look, but uh Scott's been flying over this roof, that roof, and Memorial Hall with drones. And we've been looking, but I haven't seen.
I don't know, because I haven't been up there, but if your predecessor always said that was one that needed to be on the to replace. Well, for replacement to budget for it, and it never has, so that's the reason I wanted to bring that up today, it's like. If that's something that needs to be on the next budget, I mean, I I I, if you do an inspection and say it's okay, that's fine. I just don't wanna be playing cleanup and roof, you know, in a, in a year or two, because it sounds like that was been on the suspect list. Since I've been here.
I will double check that, the EMS roof has a problem, it's a small problem, we will find it and uh. We we need a day to climb up on it with the garden hose and chase up the roof to find out where it's actually coming in, then we'll repair that. Need to get on bids for mowing, I need to get with Pat to put that out, uh some sidewalk repair out front and stuff. Uh I will go ahead and take bids on that, some of that we may be able to do in-house. Uh one thing that I am gonna do, and I know that I had asked for that, was to put my office at EMS. I would like to bring my desk back down here, it's too, everything that I do needs to almost be here paperwork wise. So I think it'd be more convenient for me to stick my desk back in over here in this room, and there's enough room for it, so. It's, it's not a big deal, other than that I asked for it to be out there, and now we're gonna bring it back, so.
You don't know till you try, right?
Yeah. Uh in the courthouse basement hallway, what are we gonna do? Uh can we, I've got some plastering to do for the finish up that door, but do we wanna do? As a paint down the whole hallway when we do that? Uh do we wanna put carpet in there? Uh how do we wanna handle the hallway? Any ideas?
Absolutely need to know that.
No, don't, just get it, you get, give me some idea, and color wise, do we wanna go back with the same color out there? Would we like to change the color, all that kinda stuff, so come up with some ideas for me on that. I just think it looks pretty, you know, everybody's coming into the commission meeting and seeing that. They're thinking, man, he can't paint any better than that, well, I didn't put them watches on the wall, but I'd sure like to take care of them. Hot water heaters are on the way uh for third floor. And I've got the second floor bathroom, the hot water heater broken in, and so I looked at trying to bring one big one in and run everything. But it's gonna be more feasible to just bring in the little ones and run each, each bathroom off of a small one-ten unit, so. Uh and cost wise, it'll be a lot cheaper, so that's what I'm gonna do, is drop those in and just put them in them places.
That makes sense.
Pictures for the county commissioners, I'd like to get you guys to tell me where to put them, which wall to put them on. And I'll bring them downstairs and hang them up for you and uh get them back on there. Uh every commissioner's got their picture.
Beginning.
Yeah.
Uh that man, so they, I I asked last time for a ice blaster in my uh budget. The ice blaster is out of the question for probably the next year, they say, to get what I wanted. So I'm gonna ask for a different thing, and that's a uh trim maker. So that we can match the trim in this courthouse, this is a molder. And uh when I put whatever piece of board I put in there, if I wanna make the beadboard for the wall. Then I can pull that beadboard out of there, I can pull the trim that I can't buy. I can buy it, I can have it specially made for the baseboard trim that I need upstairs, and it's gonna be about eighteen hundred dollars just for one room. Because I'm having somebody special make that, and I'd rather make it myself. But in order to do that, I need to spend that much money to have the machine to do that.
Is. Is it required to go back with the same identical trim?
Uh in the historical society says yes, if you're putting that trim on, but at the same time. I think it is just because it makes it look right, I mean, when you put one byes on instead of uh. The molding and the crown moldings that we have, then I think it looks.
It's kinda kind of the paneling up there, it's just, it'll look great.
I mean, when you, when you look up in, beyond the drop ceiling of the courthouse and see all that molding and trim that's up there. It's just like, oh my gosh, why would they, you know, have covered that up? So I, yeah, it's, it's one of the things where they do ask for it. Uh to go back, if you're going back original, you can also leave what's there and cover it up, but you can't take it off. So it's, it's kind of an iffy thing, but for what uh that, that machine cost, we can do uh door trims. Uh base moldings and the crown moldings. Uh, base moldings and the crown moldings that would match exactly what we got.
And you're gonna have several needs for it, as you reading.
Yeah, yeah, and it's also a planer too, so, uh, that's one of them things where. I think it'll be beneficial if, if you don't, we just move on and, uh, go for. Buying the trim where we need to and doing it that way. Uh. We are working on the lights on the, uh. First floor and we'll take care of the second floor too. We're changing them to LEDs and we're gonna put the glass guns back on there. To have them on there. And then, uh, the design mechanical that I was talking about. They also give a lot of training on boilers and air conditioning and stuff like that, and we'll do some more training with them this summer. And, uh, most of their training is, uh, a free thing. To do, some of it's a couple hundred bucks, but, uh. We'll do some of that for the boilers again this summer. That's all I got.
Um, sometime when the weather allows, can we clean that? What would be more bay out of that? It's full of like trash and junk and in front of the Red Cross. Trailers, just making sure we get all that stuff out so they're accessible and.
Oh, yeah.
We can take it.
Yeah, we, we, we are working, I am working to so, as I'm taking stuff out of offices. I'm deter- trying to determine, hey, is that historical, or is that just some junk desk, you know? That somebody drug in here, and then I separate it, and I'm I'm trying to keep all the tables and stuff that we had here. That are original. And get them into one space, and what I'll do is probably, once I move my desk out there, I'll start to use that more for. The storage of the historical stuff that needs to stick around.
So, does it need to stick around with us, or can it go to like the historical society? I think Steve has that building up by Senior Village.
I think some of that can go there, but some of that needs to stick around, because somebody's always asking for something, a table or something, and I can. Right now, we've got one over in Roger's room that. You know, uh, benefits him a lot, but had we have had to pay for that table, then, you know.
I think we just need to organize out there.
Oh, definitely.
Big space and it's not being utilized.
The more and more we get to do and. The more and more I just come in and bring file cabinets and set them down and say, yeah, let's go back to work, and so. Uh, usually I take about. One or two days and get out there and haul what I need to move off and. Uh. See if anybody needs file cabinets or stuff like that.
Uh, as far as the planer goes, I appreciate. You always looking at the best interest of. The money in the county and doing things in ways to, um, help us save. Uh, I must say though, and I tell you this often, is I I worry about your workload, because. The list goes on and on and on, and you're only one person, um, and making sure we can get you. A good crew and maybe pick and choose what we do internally versus. Out, um, a couple of my focus points is. Really getting those numbers together, uh, and getting with Connie and getting a timeline. Because we're getting ARPA requests in still, and we've always said the county priorities will be first. And we don't know what those numbers are until you know what those numbers are, um. So, I don't know, you you had mentioned that. You need to know her needs for the the window to end up to get bids, but also that she needs the work done in the middle to the end of March, so. Our timelines are like.
These things are coming together very fast.
So I'm just wondering.
I need to, the these ideas of what we want behind the wall. Need to come together faster for me to get them done. So, yeah.
Do we need to encourage those department heads to move on?
Uh, I think they are moving, I think they just, uh, are going back and forth on what, you know. What they're, so probably within the next week, they need to have that down. And, uh, back to me and then we can say, okay. Here's, but I do have people that are sitting waiting and saying, okay, you tell me what you got first, and then I can bid it. So, we've we've got those people in line, and we've, I've told them March is the date, you know.
So your timeline of Casey Coring to cut the window in the treasurer's office. And to cut the door for Debbie's office. Um, you'll have the numbers next week.
Yes.
That we can. Look at. And then if.
They'll have that start date.
Then they'll have a start date, you know how far out that is? Or will that be the middle of March, because that's when Connie needs it?
We're, we're gonna try to determine what's gonna be best. Can we cut it and fly with it? You know, and walk around that, do we wanna see that or not? And then that'll determine their date.
Gotcha, and I think that getting that done is huge hurdle, because then it's like, then it, the process is started.
But that's a bounce back and forth between me and Casey Coring, because I say, well, maybe we could fly with it. Well, are you gonna fly with it, or are you gonna have us come in the day before and cut it so they can tear it out? Well, I'm not sure yet, but I'll try to figure this out. So, those are things where, you know, I've gotta figure that out too, but. If we get with the contractor that has a plan to, you know, for. The design of the windows, I can't just say, will you bid this, and then we'll get the windows, you know? Uh, because those windows could go, uh, they get pretty expensive, let's, uh. So we need them on the same page, we can't have one contractor bidding a. Plexiglass window, one contractor bidding a bulletproof window and, uh, then saying, well, wow, this one's cheap, you know? So. Uh, we want them all on the same page, so we gotta get that down, yeah, what we're gonna do. And what kind of window we're gonna use, and, uh, I've had Roger helping me a little bit on that too, with looking at different. He's been giving me different, uh, windows things on there. We'll get it figured out.
And you're the project in the county attorney office, um, as far as in, and they. You don't know that, because this is all part of.
Yeah, that's part of that too, yeah. That, that, this would be part of every office in this building. I mean, it would have made it a lot easier for the boards that I put in over there too. Just to make and run them through there.
So you believe this is a better suggestion than looking at a rental or anything, and obviously you already priced the trim.
Yeah, and you can't rent that, but I have priced the trim, and so to make it yourself, yeah.
One office is over, I mean, two offices pays for it, basically.
Yeah.
And you have more than that too.
Yeah, I've got it in there to do it, but I just wanna make sure that changing like that is gonna be okay with you guys.
Because instead of the ice blaster, you're gonna use this, so the money's in your budget.
Yeah, and then I'm gonna probably come back sooner or later, as soon as this, uh, supply chain changes and. Makes it better, uh, then I will come back and maybe ask for that ice machine again to, to. Take care of things around here too. Until then, I'll just keep using sandpaper to get my. Stuff off.
What about your, uh, staff wise, how many positions you trying to hire for right now?
Uh, I'm just trying to get one helper right now.
Okay.
Uh, but, uh. I would, we, we had where it was due, so. Uh, just right now, just to get one in here would be great, so right now, we're going after one.
What's the range on starting pay?
Uh, sixteen to eighteen.
Okay.
So, uh, and I think that's, you know. Pretty good, uh. For what we're doing, I mean. We aren't, I know, you know, we, it seemed like we're doing a lot, but. Uh, for the work that we do is, I think that's pretty good.
But it's not good.
Okay, so.
You have a P O for the?
I did.
Oh, yeah, you do. Okay. All right, um, based on Brian's recommendation, do I have a motion to approve? Purchase order, um, out of the county general maintenance budget. The Woodmaster Tools, Kansas City, Missouri, for three thousand one sixty-five for a seven twelve planer molder. With three knife cutter head package.
I'll make a motion. Yeah, I'll say that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Yeah, three thousand one six.
Actually, something else I.
Should have added that to that, uh. That's. Made in the USA.
Made in the USA, I like it.
There's, there's several that aren't, but, uh. That is, uh, for she brought up the Kansas City company, so it's pretty well. They've got an amazing store too.
All right.
That comes with some training and.
Uh, it it would, and, uh, but I've run one before, so, uh. But it, the best thing about it is it comes from right down in Kansas City and. You you can go down there and, uh. Be right there with them.
Yeah, it's pretty close too.
Thank you.
The last time I make fun of Roger.
Are you?
All right, I'm gonna sign another, I signed my copy of, uh, Wes's C I C. So I'm gonna do the one that's not stapled together. I just realized that I had a copy of it printed out. Thanks, Brian.
This, you know, previously.
Um, yeah, I also have a purchase order in the folder, um, for the capital improvement for county attorney. Um, out of. County general capital improvement county attorney, um, to card services for miscellaneous expenses. Um, items for the county attorney office rehab, uh, she's attached several receipts, um, I'll be go. And that is in the amount of two thousand five hundred thirty dollars and fifty-two cents. You have a motion to approve. It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes three to zero. Hi, Joe.
Hello.
Is now an okay time to?
Yeah, I just found out some more information, you know, so.
Okay.
If you don't mind.
No.
Just we're on.
First of all, we sent a video of the gravel retriever. You guys will look at, and, uh, can equip as a source well dealer, they were. A member in August, I think is when I have that priced. And if you guys are on board, uh, pull the. Gravel back at the edge of the road, and also you can use them on our, uh, surface roads, and if you have a spot where you've slipped off on your shoulder, it'll help pull that back up. And then we run a blade behind it and blade it off. But it's a piece of quill like that. I would like to see us have, so for you guys, I think when I priced them. They're all around twelve or thirteen thousand, six months ago, but if you're on board. I would like to move forward with it, but I'm not gonna price it if we're not on board for it.
Um, this one that's in the video is on a tractor.
Mm-hmm.
And you're, that's where you intend.
The blade is about ten thousand dollars higher, and then you have to put hydraulics on the front of our blades.
Okay.
Because we have to have another. Set of, it's another valve, yeah, but this one connects to the tractor, and then you run the blade behind it.
And so we would use an existing tractor and.
Yes, or the one that we're leasing.
Yeah, okay, so I mean, I just, you know, how.
Yeah, no, I'm not gonna buy another. Another tractor to do this, and it'll, it'll hook up the all three of them, three point.
Okay, I was gonna ask that.
Yeah, and it's got hydraulic cylinder that swings the the disc out, and also hydraulic cylinder. That you can tip it. You know, if you wanna move your disc this way, and then you can also let it float, run off the ground, but so.
Did you see any?
I think that this is one of the complaints I hear the most often, is the rocks in the ditch, we need to get it back on the road.
And we're, and we're gonna try with this, instead of being so severe with the, with the blade, some of it. We were, I was training a guy yesterday, and we were trying to retrieve some of that, so. And then, of course, with Sourcewell, then we won't have to send it out to get three bids. And if they're not a Sourcewell member, then I will send it out to three.
This looks. Like something I would look up and brand it, I mean, it looks like a piece of farm machinery.
Right.
And I think it's probably a simpler. Hookup and stuff than the, than the blade mount.
Blade one, I, I use one at K D O, it was the.
And then. That brings it up, and you'd probably have a blade that.
Yes.
In it back. Yeah, this looks a little different than when I saw it, and YouTube has it set up, and there's a different style, I was.
There's all, they did have a cable and a little wheel on it.
Yes, and it had.
That's the one. But one we borrowed. Have that. But.
So you borrowed one?
Well.
I'm just wondering.
There was, there was, there was, there was one that the county had purchased a long time ago, and someone before me. Sold it because it never got used.
Gotcha.
So, I got, the guy who owned it contacted me, and one of them wanted to buy it back.
Okay.
Well, he wanted over half the price at that time of a new one.
Gotcha.
And it wasn't the one that I wanted, but we used it, he let us use it, we had to put a hydraulic hose on, that's all we had to do. And we ran it, and it was okay, but it wasn't the one. If I was gonna spend the money for it, I was gonna buy one that I wanted. You know, so, and I expressed that to him too, he was real good about it, so. But, yeah, we ran it last year. On some roads. So. Then we will move forward with that. Ham road agreement. I finally called and got ahold of somebody yesterday, I sent an email a week or so ago and had no response. And they don't really know where they're at on it, so I talked to Pat in the hallway, and he's. You know, try to. Try to send them and see, I really think it's in their lawyers. I think it went to their lawyers or their attorneys. So I don't know, so we are trying to get that taken care of. Uh. Three tenth road north of Muscota, where we have the big ditch, and you know, it'll wash out. I got ahold of Mrs. Rodville. And talked to her about easements, and she didn't see where there would be a problem out there, so if we have to purchase anything, I don't know. But, uh, when we get the, uh, footprint for the easements, and then the working limits where we're at. Uh, then we'll, we can go talk to them. And I'm kinda pushing M H S to get that done, because I'm concerned about us having to close that road if it gets much worse. Uh, and then I've told you before, the one on Ottawa, we've already talked to Van de Loo, she was both sides of the road, we're good there, Dollar Jim. Is still an issue. So. They sent us, or I told, asked them if they had. They were gonna fill permits out to be on our right of way, or if they needed the road. Well, they didn't know anything about any of that. So yesterday. Ooh, they sent us an email, we sent back what we wanted. They, I had to tell them kinda where they needed to put the barricades and everything, but no time was ever said about how long it would be closed until five minutes ago. Three weeks. So.
What?
They wanna close, they wanna close that short piece of Edwards for three weeks.
Okay.
So. I'm gonna talk to them about if there's any way they can open it up every night. But I don't know if they, I don't know if they'll be able to.
Well, why, do they need to close it?
Because they have to be on our road to help set the building.
Oh, yeah.
They don't have any place to do it, they're too. And I saw this coming. And they've never had said anything, and I brought it to their attention, because I was afraid they were just gonna. Close the road. You know, and we, we go out there and it's closed, I don't know. But this is, this is one of the things that we were talking about, like with Roger and everything. How do we, how do we get it out, you know? To these small towns and everybody that you just can't do whatever you want, you're gonna have to.
As far as a detour, I mean, I'm trying to think.
They just go through Main Street over to one fifty-nine and go around, but I'm not gonna be in charge of setting up detour signs.
I talked with those, uh, the engineers, they never mentioned a thing about it. You know.
Well, no, and that's how, that's how this works, nobody mentions anything till there's a problem, and we figure, we find it, and we try to figure it out, that's, that's the. That's how this works. And how do we, and how do we? Get our policies out to where everybody sees it, I've had no contact with the city of Effingham, I finally found out. Who to get ahold of. But I don't think that they even, I mean, I don't know, I'll have to get ahold of her, but I've talked to the engineer, and yesterday was a. Uh, someone in the company, a project manager for the company that's building it, because we've been talking to the. Site superintendent, and also their dirt man, is the local person in the county who's got ahold of me and said, hey, you need to come look at these things, you know, he's been really helpful. But this is kinda what is going on with this.
So what about? It's more than just the traffic, but you got, they're gonna be sending some heavy crane or some kind of equipment out.
Well, they're gonna have to do something and make sure that they don't tear up the road, yes. So that's where I wanted to ask Pat.
Seems like maybe. Equipment logic, you're gonna tear it up worse.
They're gonna use the road for a staging area?
No, they'll have their equipment in there to help set buildings up.
Eric, building this really close to the road. Which they didn't come to us about to begin, but they're off of our right away.
So there's nothing there, yeah.
Um, well, but we could also deny them. To close the road, I mean. We, we could and we could deny them permission to work in the right of way, because it's probably would have to do, almost certainly would have to do that. Um to do the project, but.
There's also worker safety to keep in mind here.
Can we just put, can we put an agreement together to where any damages that they'll pay? I mean, cause we've seen damage to our roads already with heavy equipment and, and this is a company. That's planning ahead, like, can we put something that'll hold up to where?
A bond or something.
I mean, because I don't.
Well, so with our road agreement or our, like, right away agreement or whatever, there's a whole list of notes. And I don't know if that's something we get to Pat and whether you can put it in there or whether you want an actual type of an agreement, but this guy's pushing because. They wanna start tomorrow and the building here is gonna be here on Friday and they wanna start putting the building. I said, well, it's raining here and it's supposed to snow Thursday, well, we have the time, we have to have this done. So this is kinda.
I'm, I'm kind of a no. Yeah, and, and this is kind of uh. Par for the course when we're dealing with big companies from out of town is that they, they come and it's an emergency, so you need to make a decision right now. Without looking, without checking everything, without thinking through everything, and then they might not actually do the work for six months. You know, we're already committed because, well, you said that we could do this. Um, you know, I talked to Roger a little bit about it last week when. Kind of the issue was first coming up. I don't, I don't know enough about what they're doing to say that the Florida County Commissioner should give their permission. For them to work in the right way. And I don't know enough, there doesn't sound like they really have a uh. A sign signage plan or a, a plan for a um, a detour. And you know, they have engineers that are working on this and. Uh those are all things that they know how to do and I don't know if they haven't done them just because they. Think that we'll do it for them or why, but. I, I suspect that now that it's rained, that their lot's gonna be muddy, so that makes an attractive. Base to work off of is our road. Completely dry, they would have never asked for it, but now.
Well, I think they would have asked no matter what. I think they've asked no matter what, well, no, I'm not saying they would have asked. I wanna say they would have, they would have done something.
Cause you asked then.
But there's nobody.
We contacted them, they didn't con, the only thing, only thing we were contacted about was the superintendent was concerned about the. The dirt, the backfill and everything on the west side of the building, just like we were, just like the contractor who built the pad. We were all concerned about it, I talked to the engineer. And he said, when it's done, it'll all be fine, it'll look completely different, I said, well, I don't want any dirt on the right of way. You know, cause if you take from seven feet down to. To zero and eight feet, they have eight or nine, they're seventeen feet from the corner of the building to the edge of our road. So they've got like eight and a half feet and we've got like eight and a half feet. So how are you gonna go from seven feet to nothing and eight and a half feet and keep it there? So they're talking about, all I get is what they talk about, I didn't get the email I was supposed to get. So if we need to email the company, which we do have the company now, at least a project manager and say, hey. These are, we need to know these things before you do anymore, you know. How heavy equipment you're gonna have on the road if you wanna use the road. Uh you're not gonna be storing or staging. Materials on that road, you're gonna have to put it someplace else. You know, and if anything's tore up. You're gonna have to be responsible for fixing it, hiring someone to fix it.
You know, I can put a deposit down or, or a bond. Kinda like the.
Cause I don't, I don't know. They're gonna be using, if they're using um equipment that would require them to have the permit for excess weight. Then it would be included in that, I suspect they are, but they haven't told us to do this thing.
Well, they haven't, nothing, this is just. Us finding out what we have by saying, hey, we need to do something.
Have you gone out and done a good video and a record of the road condition now?
Well, but we can.
I think that'd be a good idea.
Taken lots of pictures, but not necessarily.
A little more detail.
Do, do we have a contact info with somebody with Dollar General?
We, I should, we have, we have uh. The uh project manager we've talked to the last two days.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would think.
And then we have an engineer, Alan Betcham's his name from.
Perhaps after the meeting. Um you and I could make sure that we've got communication to them. That we're not giving permission for. Working the right away. Um for. Um closing our road. And if they need to apply for a permit.
Well, they've already applied for the permit.
Okay, so where?
It's, I haven't sent it back to them. But I didn't realize that they were going to. This was gonna be a three week, I thought maybe for a day they had to do something. A day or two, you know, not a, not three weeks.
You know, a detour, best on a road.
Yeah, well, and then we, you know, for EMS and for everybody else, then.
Could be notified.
Right. Cause I told him, if you need to close the road and you go through the proper channels, we can close, we could, you can put up the barricades. We'll officially close it and then when you're done, we'll officially open it up, but you're gonna have to do these things before it happens. And they're wanting to make it all happen, you know, right now, so.
It's not uncommon.
No, not at all. But that is. A hurdle, but somehow, I don't know, Roger talked about it before, how do we get people to understand we have policies? And we have things that need to be done, how do we get this out to the, to the public? How do we do that?
Just have to keep talking.
Yeah, but I mean.
Even the dis- discussion I had with them, you know, I said that if there's anything they need, they should, you know, to call or, you know, contact us. And, oh yeah, we'll do that, we'll do that.
So you talked to an engineer?
Yeah, the engineers from Dollar General.
It is, that Alan Betcham.
It sounds familiar, I guess it.
I, the only way you can guarantee is, and I wouldn't like it, but you're gonna have to, any wide building permit. That, things like this, it may be a hassle for a local farmer to put a building, but it's gonna stop this kinda stuff. And now to slow it down and get it.
Well, if they just would have, you know, in, in the very beginning, had all this done, should have been done before they started building.
Did Effingham require to have a permit? I don't believe so.
I have no idea.
The city of Effingham was oblivious to really what they were doing, I mean, they didn't know.
No.
That surprises me.
Well, well, it's just like when, when I was contacted by KDOT and he was wanting to move the driveways, he was telling me if we did it, it would be cheaper for the city of Effingham. And I questioned somebody, well, it's not costing the city of Effingham to fix that road.
Dollar General's doing it.
Dollar General's paying for it, so that was not right, you know, so. I don't know, we just need, I just think we need to find some way somehow to get our road policies out and we're finding things. Like through this and through some others that we need to tweak our policy a little bit and we've, we've changed some language and we'll. Be bringing it to you and then we need to sit down and kinda look it over and everybody, is there something else? That we need to do while we're trying to, to change the policy. Because like you said, we're not doing this to cause problems for people, we're gonna help them and help us because I'm sure they have a deadline. This is gonna slow them down, they're not gonna be happy, but that's not our fault. You know, and next time it maybe it will help some other contractor. To where they don't run into the same situation.
Well, and maybe it's telling, I mean, starting with, I don't know if we've educated our cities before. If that, you know, it's like if Dollar General's coming into Effingham and saying, hey, is there anything we have to do to prepare for this, well, the county requires permits, you know, here. Just making sure that's maybe.
I expected to get some type of information from them, somebody within the county to get some type of information from the city and it never happened.
Yeah.
I mean, it, it never happened until they started. Uh backfilling, I wasn't even sure that it was a done deal because I, I mean, I let them live in the city, but I expected someone to get ahold of us. Knowing. So. So I guess Pat will.
I don't believe so. And I had, I went, well, when I was telling you last week that I got involved, I had went to uh the mayor and then I went to. And he's an engineer, you know, I'm going like this up and you didn't know any of this, the particulars.
So that's, I mean, that's kinda it. Hopefully, we can get something figured out, cause I don't want everybody thinking that we're trying to stop progress in the county.
Right.
We're just trying to take care of what we have, why it's happening.
But I'm sure at some point down the road, we're gonna have to realign Edwards Road, it comes up again, there's gonna be at some point in the future, you're gonna decide to skip it back over, you know. That, that could happen, so it's gonna be an expensive.
It is so crazy because that's forty feet and you go south of town and the right away sixty feet, from the middle you measure thirty.
Right.
And twenty. I don't know why it's that way, but. When Roger was talking to Pat, I think part of it's because the city had that already planted. And there's really no way to, I don't know, changing that, maybe, is that harder once it's already planted? Like, to change, it shouldn't, like if we needed to move the right of way over and they've already planted the.
Well, that plat I'm sure was done. Yeah, a hundred years ago. Um so, the, the issue, and it comes up more now because our. Equipment is better than it was then, but. The, the road is where the road is and there's a saw on there, that is where the road is and um. The uh, the survey or the, uh the plat, there's only one piece of evidence as to where the road is located. And another piece of evidence that is better according to the Kansas Supreme Court is where the road is, um so um. A- and I had thought that roads freely migrated some with uh over the years, but that appears to not really be the case. They might get a little wider or something, but they don't generally move a whole lot. Um, so. They're basing it so strictly on, I mean, they probably look at the situation and go out and say, well, it's better for us if. The center of the road is here instead of here where the real center of the road is, so we're going to say this is the definitive. But answer to the question of where's the center of the road, but if. The situation were otherwise, it would be more beneficial to them, they would use the other. Uh the other method of determining what's center of the road.
You stand back and look and it really kinda runs with the fence that was there, if you go to the north end and look down through there, I stuck some white flags in there. Kim and I went out, we measured over our nine feet. And if you look, it kinda fairly lines up with the fence, so, but the big problem is uh what they're getting ready to do now. You know, and they said, they told me yesterday said. That they were going to do some work on that. To cull the dirt back and they will not be on our right away, any dirt on our right away, so.
They almost have to be on the right way to fix what they've done.
No, and that's what he brought up today, we've gotta go over there, do some digging and clean all that out of there, but I can't tell you, we're not gonna be on your right away. You know, so.
Well, then, then they need to make sure that they have permission.
Right, and that's what they're trying, that's what they're trying to do, well, we sent the. Right away, but they're more worried about closing the road than they were being on our right away.
I, I still suspect with this rain, now there, the street on the east is mud and the rot is mud. And they're, are gonna get snow and more rain on top of it, so they're looking at. Ten feet away from the edge of the road is the building and they could just have materials there. And it would go right onto. I mean, I, I think that's what this is all about now, because before if it was dry, they could just. And even yesterday when they poured the floor, they were in there with, it was dry enough that they were in there with the truck and the cement trucks. And they came in on the city streets, even that, this, the concrete trucks were reusing Edwards Road to come up and, and they did not. Uh go around and use the. Highway or the city streets, they came up Edwards and then came around and backed in from the. A block east, but.
So what we're gonna do is send notice they can't close our road. And that they can't work in our right away without permission or on our road. Like.
Well, and then we need to know. There we go, if, if, if we, if they do everything like they're supposed to, but they can't be putting something over eighty thousand pounds. On our road, correct?
Yeah.
And then we'll video.
Right, but, yeah.
And then any damages incurred will be.
If they, you issue, issue the permit that they're, they're gonna be able to shut the road?
Yeah, we're not until we find all this out, we're not doing anything, we're on, we're on hold, but yeah.
What I'm saying is it don't need to come before the commission necessarily.
As long as.
We, they don't usually, we, we don't get a lot of these permits, but usually they come with people moving a mobile or manufactured home through a park. And those are usually handled administratively without um.
We, we have somebody, they, they show us their axles and the weight on the axles and then when they come into town or into the county, then we usually have somebody follow them. And if they tear signs up and stuff like that, they have to pay for it or come back and fix it.
Still, that's maybe a app, just a matter of hours, not a week or, who knows how long this could turn into.
Right, right. Right, and like I said, had he not called me just a little bit ago, I wouldn't, I would have expected they'd be in there, maybe they had to set some. Some trusses or something, you know, and then in a day it was done. But for three weeks, I was a little concerned on. Why they would need that road to be closed for three week unless they're staging all that material in the road and I'm not for that.
Yeah.
Because you know what happens then? They get whatever underneath and then they tear up whatever happens, so.
What type of equipment will they be using?
Uh I don't, I have no idea.
Well, it should be in that, any application.
No metal tracks?
I mean, when they, they did the rep, the. Application for the weight limits, did they not? But do you have a copy of that or? I'm sorry if it's on the spot like that, but.
No, I mean, so, so this, it's something that should be in application, it's not. I can tell you that right now. Because normally, we close the road, like the railroad would come in and work on. A bridge going over McPherson Road, so we close the road, or they give us a detailed. A map of where they're gonna close the roads, I okay it, if they need to do something different, they do. They go in for a day or two and the road's closed and they're out of there and it's, it's over with.
Detour signs?
Yes, they, they put up, they put up the signs closing the roads. Well, and then if there's somebody who lives on that road, then we make sure that there's a way for them to get in and out, just like hawks, if they need to get into their. The, which they do, we would have to set the barricades far enough forward that they could get into both of their driveways to take care of their. What they need to, yes. So you'd only be closing from the bottom of the hill up to the stop sign.
To sign that off on the north, won't they have to?
Yes, and I told him that yesterday, that he has to talk to KDOT because I'm not telling them. Where to put their signs, when we work on our roads with KDOT, I get ahold of Kerry Brown Hall. Here he tells me what I need to do and we do it. And there's no problems, but I'm not playing their middleman for that.
No.
Not done.
No, absolutely, especially with the history there.
Yeah. Normally, what we deal with with right away is. Somebody puts in their own tube after we've said it's okay, or you have a. Water district or somebody's needing to do something and bore and they have, we have a map, they have to draw a map of where it's gonna be and what they're doing and. And it has to meet our criteria, you know, the commission has, has to be at least three foot deep and that's normally what we deal with, we don't, this is kind of just. Yes, you know, we're only gonna see this probably a couple times, you know, it's not something we're gonna see, but that's what happens. If you least expect, you know, shows up. But that's, that's again, how do we get the word out to people, you know, they in Muscota wants to build something and. Close to one of our roads or, you know, or somebody wants to, Armstrong wanted to build something next to the road or anybody, it could happen to you. Anywhere, and it's just like the building you guys talked about earlier being on the right away. I can go show you one that's on our right away right now, it's been here for a long time, a small building, it's on our right away. Yeah, it's on our right away. So, or when I measured it, it was, so. But. No, this is a. Interesting.
And I would. I, I don't like, even if they go through all the permitting, I don't like it being shut for three weeks.
I don't either, a lot of places, you know, if they're not staging. Their stuff, they should be able to move.
And be open at night.
It'd be open at night.
At least one lane.
Well, we would, we would have.
Can we say we require that? Can we say we require that, and in that way?
You can prohibit them from using your road for staging. Yeah, they don't have to be able to use your road.
Well, that's, that's.
Put their material to build from there. If they did, they should have set it back a little for it.
Yeah, yeah. Well, and see, that's what, you know, i- if it had been totally upfront about everything and worked together in a package, we'd have known what's coming, would have been prepared for this, but, um, you know, they, they done what they done, and, and ask forgiveness, not permission, is the saying, but um, I don't like the idea of, uh, that being closed for three solid weeks. I would much rather have it, that if they need it for access, close it during the day, but it has to open up at night.
That's kind of what I was thinking, seriously.
And they've been submitted a bit of a application that it's not, and maybe
Part of that's ours.
Forms could, could ask for more, but.
Right.
It's not, uh.
In case you're not aware, the reason we originally created thi- these reports, these forms, this process is because we were the county, uh, a lot of these places that move heavy loads through counties have a problem getting them from one place to another. And so they have gone out, and they run GIS systems, they've mapped all the counties with no regulation. And that's where they go, because they can tear your stuff up and not have to do a thing. And that's what they were doing, is they were coming through Ashland County, tearing our roads up, tearing our corners up. Working, you know, beating our signs up, and not fixing the thing. And so we did this to stop them. Because they were just, uh, you know, they bring through a big load when they turn the corner. They turn, their load swings over it, and they're mowing off signs and everything else, and, and, and with no regulations, they just go through, and they don't stop.
On a related note, if we have the new quarry that's going up on the north end of Morton, where they have road use agreements, routing and all of that done before they opened their doors.
That's, I mean, I don't know where they're at on that. I talked to a couple people from mid-states, and they really didn't say anything.
I don't know, I don't know the roads really north of there, but there ought to be a problem that Donovan County would be utilizing that, they'll be going north.
So Donovan County already uses Morton Road to come, to get to our quarries. So they come down out of Donovan County on the Morton Road. They cannot go because of our bridges up Neo Show, and in the Donovan County, because there's little bridges there they can't cross.
We're back in.
Why can't, they can, they can use Kingdom.
I mean, could we, but if they're coming out of, if that's coming in right south of Saint Louis Church, and they would head north on there, is there gonna be uh, rock dust like there is by Cummings, uh, for.
Well, it's possible, that's why we've got to have it. We've got to designate it, because they're gonna come off the east side off of Neo Show. And when they come on to Neo Show, they're gonna probably have to go straight to three ten, or they're gonna have to take three eighteenth by the church. Well, church isn't gonna want all that dust and everything all the time. And if you can't go east on three twenty second, and then back out Osborne, because we have a little bridge down there just north of Bells at the end of the asphalt, that they're not gonna be able to. So they've only got about going straight north, and then you've got to negotiate that turn onto three ten, there by Coonerts and Hales. And that's not necessarily gonna be the best turning onto the road right over the top of that hill. So.
Yeah, I agree, though. We need to be proactive with this one.
I mean, this is. Learn our, us and Ham's.
Yeah.
Um, and, and this, and the, um, uh, next area and, and the road agreements with, with those. We don't have any permit in place or laws in place right now, because they, they don't really have to come to us, do they?
I don't know.
Well, they do, they, they do for whole routes.
Well, but how does that work then for rebel and for services?
Right.
That's a really great question, because Ham's is the only one I've been involved in, and it's just because.
They did it right out in the middle of the county, on a gravel road where the rest of them were on.
It, it is something that, uh, the county could do through, um, through the Z word that you don't wanna talk about. Um, as from the KDAG, they made for Cam, they made it a requirement of their licensure to get an agreement.
Okay.
I don't, I can't tell you that there will definitely be that on this next application, uh, because the the, the quarry operator's going to say it's putting us at a competitive disadvantage, because we have to do this, and there are other quarries in the county that are not required to, to do this. As a general rule, the public has a right to use the roads, and every time I drive up to the courthouse and park, I'm damaging the road a little bit, um, it's a real small amount, but, but uh, within the legal limits, uh, weight limits, um. It's not illegal to use the road, and the public has a right to use them, and that's the, the way the law is developed, and so um, you know that if you have a lot of grain trucks or, or um, rock trucks driving over a gravel road, that it's going to cause uh, a good deal of wear and tear, and.
Their road really isn't wide enough for that either. If you want to know the truth, I mean, it's not wide enough all the way down through there, and you can't, you can't hardly meet a truck on that road.
So the Ham Road Agreement came about because KDAG put it in their licensing that in order for Ham to open, they needed to have road agreements in place.
I think it was that he had, that KDAG would not issue that permit without.
Gotcha. Okay, so it wasn't us initiating.
Correct. Am I wrong? Wasn't that a township road, and then that became a county road, because the township didn't want to take the, um.
My understanding is that the county took the road over, but it was a township road, now I don't.
Yeah, and to facilitate, it was like the, to, to get Ham's there, we wanted to the quarry to be available for us, so we took over a, a mile of road, or two mi- I don't know how far that. Couple miles of road.
Probably.
But then it became our problem.
Yeah, and it's still our problem. There's still issues out there, so. But when we go into the next one, we need to, like you said, try to be proactive and.
Yeah. And what we've learned through this one.
Because you never know, there may be more quarries come up. I mean, people are finding this rock, you know, all these other quarries have been around a long time, and they're gonna run out of out of rock, or mineral rights, or however they do that to get to it. So.
This, this is an excellent example where if you had even the minimum, you could create a conditional use permit for all rock quarries, and then you would get to review and approve.
And conditional use permits under the statute have to be reviewed and approved by the governing body. So.
Really, I don't know. I haven't heard any negative, uh, outside of Ham. Like, those are always the calls I get, maybe.
Well, and the main reason is it's a gravel road.
Yeah.
Yeah, the other two, the other two, yeah, and the other two, they're on on surface road, but now that the city won't let them go down Second Street, they're coming out on three oh two, and going across the bridge that.
Yeah, but they can't still go down Second Street, but they're gonna make it a truck route, they're, they're gonna stop that now.
Yeah, it's gonna stop, yeah. Well, it's Second Street.
Where they're gonna, at Harper, it's gonna be a place you can turn.
Turn.
The highway.
Yeah, but you.
But what they're gonna do is go across it for your talk, is it three oh two?
Yeah, three hundred second road. Come out there where.
That's easier just to go right across there.
Right. But there's also a small wooden bridge there also. Three, well, the other one is three eighteenth.
Yeah.
And it's
One of the.
It's already, it's.
Pretty good.
Yeah, three oh two is better, it's township, but three eighteenth, they've already had trouble there, and they put up, uh, no commercial traffic signs on their road. Because they've had troubles, and then there's also a, a big culvert that probably needs replaced. So.
Cut off those signs, and then if there's commercial traffic.
Then they call the law, or they call me, and they say, hey, so and so's cutting through here. So then I went and I talked to that truck driver and said, hey, he said, I know, I knew I was gonna get in trouble, I was empty. And I said, well, you know, they're, they're complaining, so. So are we good on this Ebbingham thing about our general? We'll give you everything we have, and we'll just have to sit down.
Yeah.
And try to get something figured out, and I'll call and send emails, or gonna send emails stating until all this is figured out. We're not gonna do anything.
Especially if they were planning on doing it.
Or you can do that, it makes no difference to me. But between the two of us, we need to.
Yeah, that's it together.
Okay, all right. Well, that took a lot longer than I thought it would, but I didn't have all the information come out, so. My weight this morning was worth it, huh? All right, I'm good.
There is a purchase order for Senior Village in the folder. Um, Michelle and I were chatting about that, uh, the end of last week, that it's to SINTOS. Um, I am not ready to approve that. I have an email into the maintenance director up there at Senior Village, because I have an email from him after our inspection, the end of January, that everything was good. That there, so now all of a sudden, we have to replace something, doesn't, isn't in line with the with the, uh, results we got after our inspection. So I would, um, make a motion to table this and get more information.
What is it that they're requiring?
Uh, replace failing, addressable, silent night control panel with new replacement module, and, um, I have.
And again, where was this originating from?
A SINTOS, so SINTOS does a semi-annual inspection. Um, and on January seventeenth, I got the email lastly, yeah, January seventeenth. Um, the maintenance director sent me, hey, Casey, you can always reach out to me with any questions. This was not based on the fire marshal tag. It was a semi-annual inspection per our agreement with SINTOS. The results were all good, no problems with any of the fire suppression systems at this time. I hope this answers all of your questions. So, it just doesn't make sense why now we have a purchase order when the inspection results were fine. So, um, again, I don't unless Michelle had gotten further, which her and I had been communicating about that, and, um, I think we should wait.
We do have a little contractor now that may, this may, he said that they could also give us a second opinion on possibly.
Yeah, that's true.
I'm not sure whether scope it, but I think he does that.
Um, and also Brian kind of gave me a little insight from his previous experience at Senior Village was, um, this is something they installed, so it should, he may be covered. But again, he wasn't sure on timeline, so I just don't think we have enough info to approve a four thousand six hundred forty-nine dollar.
No, absolutely not.
Okay, so we will just put that one back in here.
Yeah, motion to table that, or just.
So it's not on.
It's not due right away. It's not, is it a bill, or is it an estimate or a bill, or a bid?
Price to perform scope of work.
Okay, so there's no.
That's really.
Okay.
You hadn't heard any more from the maintenance, okay. I was just making sure, because I knew you and I were talking about it, and I didn't get a response, so I just think we should table it.
We do pay SINTOS, the fire protection, um, monthly.
Yeah.
There's something that goes on monthly, and it seems like some of them are labeled as biannual inspections, so I don't know if it's just portions of the same unit, or what, I don't know.
Okay, well, yeah, so I'll pass that on to our administrator to look into that further, maybe.
Okay.
So, okay. Okay. Um, so Stacy has, um, she's off today, so she's gonna send us, um, a copy of the county cleanup flyer, um, for us tomorrow. So she'll just watch her email for that, she'll send us a copy of that. And I'm just looking in order, I think, if you guys have anything else you want to add. I know the county counselor kind of toward the end, but I, there was one more thing I wanted to talk about was the constituent anonymous feedback, feedback form.
That was one thing I wanted to bring up.
Okay, so, um, just because this has been discussed, and now we have a new meeting format, which is even better, so that we can discuss how it's been discussed, but, um, November, we put that in place, and the first round of them, um, I ended up reading those during my commissioner comments just to address them, because we put this tool out there for the public to utilize. Um, and I just wanted to show, I guess, that we were utilizing it. Um, then we kind of had a discussion after that, um, with previous commissioner and Eric of not doing that format. Um, they didn't like that I read those, so we talked about addressing them in the workshop, and then coming together as a group of how we want to respond to them. Um, I know before you were elected, we talked about this, um, and.
I think I made my opinion pretty clear.
No, you, you absolutely made your opinion pretty clear, and so, and so it's been kind of just sitting on the back burner of it feels like I'm over here, you know, and everybody else was over here, which is fine, because that happens, um, more often sometimes than not, but I, we've obviously gotten several in the past few days, and I kind of got into this like boiling point of enough, because of the twenty-six that we had gotten, like twenty of them were kind of bogus. You know, you, you couldn't address these, basically. Um, and so I made a post on my social media that like, this was a good tool, and I think that I was going to come today to make a motion to do away with the anonymous piece and make someone put their name out there. Um, I know on our nuisance requests, we have that you have to put your name out there, and we do get them that are John Doe or Jane Doe. Um, but I actually had perspective from constituents that are looking at it as a positive tool and also not wanting to sometimes be I mean, let's just be realistic. There are people uh, out there that don't feel comfortable complaining. They're, they, they're just nice, you know, they don't want their name associated with a complaint, but they do still want to share it. Um, and I think that gave me a different perspective of not wanting to do away with it, um, for, for me. My, my district, um, that I will still have the anonymous piece, because it's important to people, and people have even submitted since then, like, please keep this, we appreciate it. Um, and then I can just ignore all of the other ones. But I wanted to have that conversation with you two, because I did like the thought of keeping us kind of aligned in how we handle them and how we look at them, um, so.
I, I want to be addressed, because all of a sudden I started getting these, please keep the, uh, anonymous feed. And, and I had no idea where this was coming from, because I, and, well, I didn't know that, that was something that was put out, I'm going like, what was said, I thought maybe it was something that was mistated during a meeting or whatever. I'm fine with getting those reports, and then, and each one of you seeing them too. And then we decide, you know, what, which ones have merit, uh, which, you know, w- we, we look into them. We're aware, then it becomes falls on us, what we do with those complaints. And I think that, a- and I still don't like the idea of reading, uh, every complaint to, in front of the public, because that could that's, uh, because very tricky, very quickly on what people would start saying, and I don't want to put us through that, or, uh, when you got into two, in an election year, what somebody could, you know, i- it would just make a a, a venue for attacks that we were, okay, we're gonna read every one of these, and we'd have to read them, and, and it would just be totally off the wall. But the complaints that come through, and we can compile, kind of use it, compile the data from that. See what's legit and act on it. So I, I think it could be a good tool. So, that's, that's my take on it.
Yeah, I've never been in favor of the anonymous format. If someone wants to get ahold of us, they email us or contact us.
They email us or contact us. And ask, you know, I don't want my name out there, but I've got a concern or something that happened and I'm okay with that. By giving these folks a stage. And I think everyone I've seen has been ridiculous. I don't think I've seen one single one that had merit. Have you seen any that merit at all?
It was the very first round that we had good ones and other than the ones just saying, please keep this um form.
And I believe those comments came from the people who want to keep doing this. I mean, I I just can't believe. I just, I would not be in favor of keeping it anonymous for me. I'm all for email me, call me. I've had a lot of people in my life who said, hey, I want to tell you something, I want to tell you, but I respect that. I mean, that's fine.
Yeah, I I I don't mind the anonymous thing, but I do not want that to become the weekly ritual of bashing. Whatever, whatever is the popular thing to bash that day and.
Can I speak from a department head? Point of view. If you read them aloud. You have to be very careful that if you have a problem with the department head, you've spoke to them about that before you even do it. But if that's the first time we hear it. It's probably not gonna go over very well.
Yeah, I fully agree.
Well, and the ones that come in that are inappropriate, like I like even when I've read them, like they were the first round. So they were not bad, um, and even the ones that had, like, if they're talking about me, I have no problem like talking about myself. But if they have anyone else's name, like, we would never do that, like, we would never. Out a department head or out, you know, a fellow commissioner unless you want to do that to yourself, like.
Well, but it but it's almost impossible to. Uh, to read anything out of there without disseminating who it is. I mean, you can leave the name out, but.
Yeah.
And that's what I was getting at, you know.
Right.
It's gonna be somebody.
Right.
Yeah, and so that's very, I I I I just, I don't think you can possibly.
Address them.
At at address them like that because there's gonna be clues, I mean. You know, if I would use, we'd leave your name out of it, but we would use the word word rude. Or patrol grade or anything like that, you're gonna know instantly which department it is and there's, you know, it's it's. It's not a good thing, but the in the act, when you combine all these together and there's. Legitimate complaints and it's like, oh, well, we heard about this road. We go check it out and there and there's more complaints and to back it up, that becomes our responsibility to forward. Those concerns on. It is a heads up for me to act on that.
With you saying that as far as us forwarding the complaints on, are you okay with reducing the amount of people that receive those? And taking department heads off and just having commissioners receive those? Cause that's another thing is like. Some of them we receive.
We get some down.
Um.
I didn't know that.
The county councilor's on there, county clerk and IT director with us.
Okay.
Um, and again. I just.
Well, first of all, it it should be called a concern form, not a complaint form. You know, to me, I don't like the negative.
I don't know, let me look. I can't remember how we worded.
Call it concern for. That's concern. We've sent a different message because. Complaint, I mean. Maybe I do have a, I mean, I'm not really complaining that I have a concern, you know, there there's a difference to me. And uh. Yeah, I think you should have their name on it and if they want to have a box to check, so I'd like to keep my name out of this. Maybe it's something to do with their neighbor and, you know, it gets awkward, you know, I get that.
Citizen anonymous feedback form.
Okay, Jesse called a complaint for it, so I'll make sure it's called.
Feedback, yeah, sorry. Well, that's all we. That's all we've received, so but um, other than.
Twenty six, you think there's maybe two or three good ones? Should have legit legitimately, I mean.
So before people were saying, please keep the this form anonymous as well, I had tallied them up. On that post when I was. Kind of like over and over, you know, the same thing. Uh, there were twenty four that were submitted and then four were. We addressed that we're we're good about taxes, about, can't remember some of the other things back in November, but um.
I think several have been.
But yeah, it's been.
Uh, the trash on two eighty six was several of them that.
Right, that's those are good things, yes.
Yeah, yeah, that was one about picking up, the county was picking up trash on the state highway because we adopted a highway, which. That was one that one of our employees took it upon himself to organize a Sunday afternoon to get together and do something. So it wasn't like the county um was doing that, but. Anyway, I just, um, I'm in favor of keeping it anonymous now after getting constituent feedback. And I would like it just to come to commissioners and then we can just, like you said, ignore what we need to ignore. And address together what we need to address and then.
I am not in favor of that. So I mean, I'm I'm okay with it until there are. Uh, if if something else would arise, but I mean, I would prefer, I mean, it's, it helps to be more specific. If if they've got specific concerns, specific things that they need to put. On there, I mean, it is does help to have maybe. Call, let me know, email me and we'll have a conversation. That works much better.
Which on the form, um, first name, last name and email are all optional. Um, that they can put it, which I know one of those people did put the name, which was the first time I noticed. I was like, oh, you can put your name.
First name.
Yeah.
Yeah. Probably a mistake.
So I just wanted to bring that up so we can have that discussion.
Favor of the form, but not the anonymous part.
Okay.
Okay. I think it also has a potential to undermine um our employees and the morale. If the tools out there, I don't think it's.
If it if it's seen, if it's seen beyond us.
I agree, if it's seen beyond us.
That's that's where, um, if it was out there, I would be completely for getting rid of it completely, but I don't mind it. Being anonymous beings that it's just for us. We can use it for our consumption.
Yep, I agree. Okay, well, thank you for that discussion because I had that on my list of. Um. That, okay. Um, county counselor updates.
Okay, well, we had a couple of things on. Um, one is, you you may recall that. A year or so ago, we adopted a resolution and joined in with the the state of Kansas. Um, with the attorney general's office on opioid litigation. Nationwide class action opioid litigation. And uh, we received a three thousand dollar check in October and then more recently. Um, last week or maybe within the last two weeks, Michelle. I received another twenty two thousand dollars in checks. Uh, as our portion of those opioid settlements and there's uh some information that came with them that we. One of them, we have point four four three three percent of the. Uh, amount that was distributed and one of them it was point four one six three percent. Um, of the amount that was distributed, uh, but anyway, uh. And one of them was only eight hundred dollars, eight hundred and fifty seven dollars, which was a. Smaller. From Mallinckrodt.
Not crying, yeah, it's a pharmaceutical.
Yeah, so it's a, it was a smaller. Smaller settlement.
Yeah, they actually supply chemicals, they're probably supplying some chemicals using making them.
I think. I. One of the reasons why we entered into the agreement with the attorney general is that your county council is inspired to follow all of this and that. Uh, to be involved in that litigation and in that kind of detail and I. I. I, so I don't know, but I believe you.
Yeah.
Uh, so uh, also they have a, the attorney general's office. Um, wants us to send any annual report. We need to do one for twenty twenty two. Uh, you had designated Michelle Phillips last year as the contact person and she's the one that the. Info was addressed to, so we prepared a form together. And um, for twenty twenty two, it would just be the one McKenzie for two thousand ninety ninety five dollars and eight cents. Uh. Under the, so and then for twenty twenty three, when we do the one next year, we'll have at least those three checks that were just received on it. Uh, none of those funds have been spent. And under the terms of our agreement. Um. That we we entered into. Um, the there are approved purposes for the expenditures and those are. Uh, fall into two categories and one is. Um. To for programs that. Prevent, reduce, treat or mitigate the effects of substance abuse and addiction. And then the other is to reimburse the county for. Uh, previous expense related to substance abuse mitigation or arising from. Opioid abuse, so. Uh, that and that was one of the really difficult things that that. You know, you could say that we had some people that were in our jail because they committed crimes that related to. Um, their opioid use or addiction and or addiction. But determining which ones exactly were the exact dollar amount that. The county spent on, excuse me, because of the opioid endemic. Uh, was really difficult. But. We do have. Twenty five thousand eight hundred and forty one dollars and sixty five cents that there. That is earmarked for those two things, projects to reduce. And to uh to reimburse. And so at some point you may want to, at some point you should. Determine what to do with it rather than just leaving it there. Um.
Was there a timeframe on, you said, history of previous expenses or is there a timeframe on that? Cause I know our EMS and sheriff's departments probably both got through a lot of Narcan and. Emergency calls and. They probably have had additional training on opioid. Uh, addiction treatments, so. That may be a target.
I'm I'm looking at the resolution on it. I don't know that it had a.
We probably go back three or four years, I would think, pretty safely, wouldn't you think?
Yes, yeah, definitely that, but I I think it went back to the beginning of time.
I'd ask Cory about that, I don't understand.
You mean about where to spend the these funds, yeah.
Maybe that maybe because they're still having to expend money with. I don't listen to the scanner, but I talked to someone recently who listens to it a lot. Apparently we have a lot of. Open recalls.
I will, I don't know if the health department does anything as far as um. Programs or anything like that as far as um. For health either.
Media hopefully does. I know the city has given me to hope and guidance center both for. Counseling for all that, so uh because we have to use part of the money from gas tax. Or something has to go back to drug and alcohol, whatever, maybe alcohol tax, that's what it is.
Mm-hmm.
So I know that they have programs, so.
Yeah, I think if we talk to um Cory, Jack and even Sherry, I know Sherry had teamed up with. Uh. Um, the sheriff's office and they were doing programs for the schools on um. Fentanyl and different things of just like awareness, so I think amongst those three, they should be able to come up with a pretty good. Plan for how to utilize.
On community corrections, yeah.
Resources.
Or have enough angles that you set up pretty quick.
Um, if I can, I do believe and I may be incorrect, but it looks like there may be up to five more. Um, settlements coming through the attorney general's office that we could potentially get more money for. So, because there's a list and there's about nine or ten listed, so we've received up to this date from.
Okay.
Thanks. Thank you.
Okay, so that was the first. The first one, the second item. Uh, relates to Elm Drive and. Uh, the situation, of course, is that there was a. Uh, a quiet title case that needed to be. Done, and there was a uh, a plat that was applied for and. Anyway, we, the county was part of that process cooperated with that process and. Uh, the plat was in is in place now and has been for a while. And the landowners are are now. Um. Trying to get. Maintenance done on the road and. Uh, but they contacted county and I think they contacted county because Joe can respond and they also. Contact the township and don't get much of a response from what I gather. Uh. We had, uh. So I I've prepared a a revolution that uh. Designates Elm Drive as a township or local service road and there's a statute that has those designations in there, KS six eight. Dash five oh six. Um. And really the the purpose of doing this is to. Um. Is is to make official that. This road definitely is part of the county road system and is designated as a township. Road with township responsibility. Um. So I would. If you have questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but I you should consider whether to adopt that resolution.
Um, I just have a quick question on. Um, this process, um, because. When I read that email, it was like deja vu and I looked back in my township emails. Um, in this exact scenario and working with Roger and Joe. In October. And had emailed Tim Bell. Explaining that, so. Is this the process to solidify that or an email just? With the information to the township stating this is a township road to be maintained by the township is not suffice. I'm just wondering, because all of, like in our township meetings, when you have them highlight their roads and all the things they're maintaining. That's where you're, you said this morning, like to follow up this, we probably need a blanket one with all of them. It is. Is that what I understood?
I I I understand exactly what you're saying and I. Uh. Is, should this be required? Probably not. Uh. But. I I don't. We we don't have uh full feedback, so I'm not sure whether. If there's a reason why the township has not acted and if there. If it's, I I understand it might be because. They're saying they don't have any official word that this is their responsibility. Uh, and maybe some of that is conjecture on my part. But adoption of this resolution would make it clear. Um, and would have a simple place to point to to show that everything has been done and that it is the township's responsibility. So.
Okay, yeah, I was just curious because.
Well, we spoke with. Belle before. Uh, before the road was accepted that we actually held up. Approval of the plat until he agreed that he knew it was a township road, so I don't think there's a question that he knows a township road. I think it may just be a question that, um, I I can tell you from dealing through the plat that. Um, you know. There's some people, you were just talking about getting complaints and there's some people who complain all the time and there's some people who hardly ever complain. And you can read this anywhere. I can tell you I have. Large stacks of paper from. This.
So I have a question. If we have a township. That we have a lot of issues with. What's my responsibility? To the concerns we get about that? How do I handle that? Do I bring it to the commission? Who do I take it to? Because I run out of, I run out of answers. And then we continually continue, like Roger said. You continually either give emails or phone calls. And it's, there's nothing I can do. To get anyone to respond. How do I respond to that?
There there's very, very little that the board of county commissioners or the county county staff have any. Uh, authority over a township board. Um, so. Um. I think to refer them to the township board is essentially all we can do.
Okay.
And this situation that had been tried and didn't work, so this was my attempt at. Coming up with with something that would. I think help. To do it.
Cause that's one of our things that we have implemented is our concern form and things like that, so we. Take pride in the fact that we return all of those calls. We follow up. So when we're telling her, you know, this is who you need to call. And they're not responding to her in any way and we've sent the information repeatedly. You know, it it gets to the point where what are we supposed to tell her?
Um, and one of my concerns is the. Uh, townships that are. Um, publishing their meeting times and then they're not showing up, so. What, I mean, I don't want to be the police to turn them in that they're not meeting, that they're a lot of, because if people go for a complaint. And they show up at the time and place of the meeting, I mean, I think. I think most of the townships have done. A pretty good job about uh adhering to that, but I know there. A pretty good job about uh adhering to that, but I know there has been cases that. There's no one there, it's like, oh, one person is sick, I believe, on this last uh one complaint we had. So they canceled the meeting, well, there's no uh, you know, that'd be an open meetings violation. Wouldn't it to not, to not show up at the time and place without a cancellation or some kind of notice and I know that's not.
That wouldn't be, but getting together at some other time and place would be a violation of the Open Meetings Act. But it's just. To not show up, it's something that's scheduled, but uh but the the violation would be if they have a meeting at some other place or time or as. What happened to the notice?
Okay.
And by statutes, the county attorney does have jurisdiction to uh investigate. Violations of the Kansas Open Meetings Act, so those could be referred to her and I have not done that, maybe I should have, but.
What's the resolution number?
Twenty-two oh three fifteen seventeen, is that what you have, Patrick?
Fifteen seventeen, yes.
Okay.
Let me pass resolution number twenty-two three dash one five seven seven. Did, was you gonna read that?
Yep, uh um, yes, do um, I have a motion to approve. Atchison County Resolution Number twenty-two-three dash fifteen seventeen, a resolution of Board of County Commissioners of Atchison County, Kansas. Designating Elm Drive as a township or local service road pursuant to K S A. Sixty-eight dash five oh six A four and including said road in the county road system. Do I have a second?
Uh second, but.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I pass this three to Zira.
So then you want us to, then she contacted us, that was to contact her saying we've done this or can we just let this go?
No, I, yeah, we, uh we need to get notice out, I think maybe uh. A letter from Michelle, including to the township with copy to them.
I told you, we celebrated yesterday. And then the request for payment, do you want to go over that at all, Pat? For the bond?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, I'm glad you said that.
I have a.
Several weeks ago, uh U S D three seventy-seven gave a list of some projects that they would like to see uh. Done for the sports complex out there and one of those is a purchase of a four-wheeler. So the information about it was part of the the request that I prepared a uh. A letter for your signature to. There was a a letter, uh request to exchange bank uh to pay that exact amount to. U S D three seventy-seven and uh for the purchase of the four wheeler, so.
Do I have a motion to approve the request for payment to three, to U S D three seventy-seven for two thousand twenty-two Honda? And the amount of nine thousand two hundred and five dollars and ninety-seven cents. Then move in second, and all of those in favor say aye.
And um Michelle has given me a uh. A statement, an invoice, I guess, that we received from Stifle. Uh for seven thousand five hundred dollars is their municipal advisory fee.
No, I mean, it's got one forty.
My question was, no TC on that, it was just why I get it, Mr. Anderson, is because um I think it needs to come out of that.
It can definitely come out of that, oh okay, so you want me to create one of? Alright.
Yeah, I think we, yes, I believe. Yeah, yes.
But it should be paid out of the, it should be paid by the trustee from.
Instead of county general, were you talking about Stifle?
Correct, yeah. Correct.
So.
Okay.
Sales tax um for the sports complex, okay.
Okay, so are we gonna pick that up next week or are we gonna redo that?
We approved it, it's just the account that's coming out of.
So.
So it's the county general, it should say what?
Well, it isn't that, it's a request to the, it's just like the the one that I sent for the three seventy-seven. But it would need to be changed to put Stifle in there and the amount of seventy-five.
It would be more.
I received it and was going to pay it through A P, but it won't, excuse me, it won't be payable through A P. It'll be paid through the trustees of the um at at exchange.
Oh.
Um so it'll be a different type of form, so it won't actually come out of the money that we have from taxes and come out of the bond.
So we want to get a new form for next week? So.
Yeah, if you're going to have a. We're having a workshop.
Yeah.
I can have it in.
We can sign it. So did we vote on that?
That was actually passed last, yeah, we voted this last.
Oh, okay, that's, alright, that's my, I knew it sounded familiar, I just couldn't remember that.
I'm gonna have you guys sign this one. Because that's not stapled and the one I sent was my copy that was stapled, so. Is that all you had, Pat?
It is.
Okay.
Yes, but I go, um. I basically am wanting to find out where we are status wise on the payments, mainly the twelve thousand for a new. Um I have the A D O N verifying some of these other charges that were sent. Um to the best of our abilities, um because like I say, some of these were from back in September. Some of these um are current, um so I do, I would like to know at least on that, um the January. Um where we're at, where do you want me to be if I need to go ahead and and run payments? And then if we find that we can't substantiate or not substantiate these current charges that we were asked for um. Unpaid invoices, can we go ahead and process them? That's I'm my my question, I just want to make sure where we're. Um because I don't know if anybody's gonna legitimately be able to say that this person was or was not at the senior village. On a certain day, they should be able to, and I think that's why I, why I pushed it on to the A D O N kind of for a second opinion. But um we had a, we had a, a good system going and where these came from and that was one of the questions because I did respond. Back to Mark Hastings in regards to, you know, questions that did arise because of these delinquent notices. Because of the.
So he's answering the um invoices outside of the management fee one, then is he giving you answers?
He hasn't gotten me anything, I just brought to him, he was questioning um. The unpaid invoices, because the twelve thousand is one of those, I don't know if you guys have actually seen these, um but these are. These are some that were um sent to me. Wanting me to verify our registers to find out if they've been paid or not, because we do everything by invoice numbers. So these are the actual invoices, if you guys want to look through them, you can, but most of them in are in regards to. Um employees that came from one of their other.
Um, oh, so you got copies of the invoice?
I did.
Oh, perfect, okay, I, because the last I knew there was a backup documentation, so, okay.
Verified it.
To the best of our abilities, I have the, I just sent them to um the A do, A D O N, so.
So how would anything do we know?
Right.
Myself, right.
Uh I'm in favor of the January management fee. The twelve thousand.
You go ahead and pay it. One more time, switch to Pam.
Uh they're ending on Saturday, so just, we'll prorate this month.
Okay. Over to January.
Yep, and then February eighteenth, um which he's been corresponding with us on their exit strategies, making sure our staff has everything they need. Um and, you know, they're gonna bring, bringing back keys and all the things, so they've been corresponding with us on.
So is our new administrator, is his license on the facility?
Yesterday, yep.
And and uh previous one, she's out?
So there's, yeah, there's like the transition period, she's coming up, I think he said tomorrow to bring keys and bring some um. Our new manager has already asked for some information from Brandon, and she's gonna be bringing that up um to give to him, so. They're just, it's that week of transition of 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 departure and and um Mr. Mercier taking over.
And they have been sending um invoices from other entities we use, vendors that we use, so. Um we need to make sure that those are not coming directly to us versus going to a new.
You know, I I touched base with our business office manager and she had a good uh transition with Kathy and communication as far as. Mm-hmm, so that's, it's going good.
You want, I can, I can leave this with you if you guys want to go through these, um I think definitely our A D O N needs to kind of try to verify what she can verify and um.
I'd be more interested in seeing that afterwards, after she's.
Okay.
Cause I mean, once it's verified, then that's just more clutter, we don't have to consider it.
Right.
Until we, then, then we get to the ones that questionable and then see what what that entails.
Like I say, we are paying the other vendors because we have utilized those services, so that's not a question. So, um I'll go ahead and if it's okay, I mean, I will go ahead and do the twelve.
What's the amount that is in question?
Um, there is seven thousand one hundred thirteen here and twenty-seven thousand seven thirty-three on another.
For um basically utilizing a new as an agency.
Okay, the majority of these are um time that has been diverted from their entity to our in. Entity as far as workers.
And as far as our um time reconciliation, our time clock setup for agencies. At Senior Village, I I have to double check that with Jody, but because remember when we were talking about Mr. Mercier, how he will. Clock in, clock out, they're gonna set him up like the agencies, um so there should be, I mean. I would assume if, I mean, there's a process, so there may be, yes, so.
And and just to let you know, he is now set up on the time clock. Um I did speak with him and got the information I needed for that yesterday, so.
Thank you.
Um, yeah.
I, see, I didn't know, I guess, I didn't know you set up the time.
I don't.
You did it, cause you.
I just, I was here and other people worked and um other people couldn't be, so.
Thank you.
I um I took it upon myself to go up there, meet him, um I gave him the W nine, he was going to um fill that out and. Get that back to me.
Awesome.
And.
I think that that would be a good thing, even for when the new administrator takes over whoever we hire. To actually have to clock in, so we have, well, I, I don't know if it's been done in the past because. Uh it's that, uh I think for even our. How do we know, or how can we prove that we've had so many hours of administration? In the building and things without it and it's, it's, you know, I I think we need that to for, to cover. Our own self and the reporting and everything, so we've actually got, we we have no idea how long. Our previous administrators have been there, so.
Right, so, okay, to go ahead and do the twelve, for January and then February, we'll, we'll decide on that later. Um, one other thing that I have, and this is the last thing that I have, um I did, um I was approached by um Lisa Hill, who. Is the Walnut Township Treasurer resigning her position, so um. With that being said, she is willing to help out until a replacement is found, but that replacement would be found by you three, so. What we will do is like what we did at Mount Pleasant Township, we will put something probably on our um website. And we'll give it a timeframe and interested parties will su- supply us with a letter of interest and then those would be brought to you.
Okay, and social media too?
Yeah, perfect.
And is there anything, you have to be what, registered voter, you have to be a resident, I mean, all of those.
Have to be a resident of Walnut Township.
And an age of eighteen?
Well, you'd have to be a registered voter, so that would be eighteen, because it's a voted posi- I mean, it's elected a position. Um she was just, um no, I take that back, she will be elected in in um for twenty-four. So in twenty-four, she'll be elected in and start again, I mean, this term, so.
This term ends in twenty-four.
Correct.
Appointment interim until the election, okay. And speaking of postings, um Memorial Hall, was that reposted for that position?
Kaylee asked me about that and I didn't know it needed to be reposted, so for the Memorial Hall, um.
We'll get those.
Trustees, yeah, we can get that put on, yes, so, but I just wanted to let you guys be aware that um she. It it was effective as as of the tenth and um she is willing to help until a replacement is found, so.
Are there any requirements as far as?
Treasure positions, was there background?
Yeah, that's what I was wondering, like the.
As far as treasures go, um, Joe, I believe the clerk is the only one, I believe, that needs to be bonded. And that would be through their insurance, but she has given me um the year end annual report. For last year, so um there's a couple changes she's making on that and then she's gonna give me the updated version, so. Uh but she came in last Friday evening and we sat in the office and talked for a little bit.
Okay.
So she um. She's um. With saying the ca- the coma, the Kansas Open Meetings Act, um her job, she changes hours. Um quite a bit throughout the week, I am apparently, and so meeting times are a little troublesome sometimes. Because there may be times she works until a later time, so that was one of our, one of her concerns, so. Um but I will get something out and probably what, do you want to go for like a month or a three week period? How long do you want to put it out?
Yeah, I think, was it March sixth, we cut the Memorial Hall off, can we do them both, that way we kind of keep them on a.
Definitely, perfect, yes.
I think that's what we decided, March sixth, and then we would vote on it March seventh, the first meeting.
Perfect.
Yep.
Okay, I will give them, I'll give them, thank you.
Um, I have a question and um, you might be able to answer this, so I forgot to ask last week. But I was put on an email um from Tyler Riordan, uh Republic Services, that he's had his third request for.
Oh, that has been taken care of.
Okay.
That has been taken care of, it was, that was, that was a um miscommunicate, miscommunication between myself and Stacy.
Okay.
Um it was, it was um.
It was weird, all the people that were put on that email, so I was having a hard time to know.
Yes.
Like, who actually handles those?
Stacy and I both received it or Solace's manager, we both received it. Uh we discussed it, talked about it, and she's like, well, should I put it out there? I think it's public record, um so. I was going to reach out to Mr. Henderson and I didn't actually get to send emails in, so. But we, we have, we have sent it, she apologized for the delay, she apologized for, I mean. Everything, so she, she has sent back.
Okay, cause I had told him, thank you for bringing it to our attention, I will get an update at the commission meeting tomorrow and then last week with the new format.
Yes.
It was like an add-on, so I didn't do that, so I'll just respond that it's sound, it's been taken care of, thank you for your patience with us.
Stacy, Stacy responded pretty much immediately.
Okay.
So.
And then you have set up Rainbow for February twenty-eighth for forty-five minutes.
Right.
Starting at ten, so if you guys want to put that in your calendars, so you know those. February twenty-eighth, I'm not gonna file it till I told you guys about that, she'll be here at ten and for forty-five minutes. And then Jess Fannas Steel, um the K Works guy that I met at the K A C, reached out to Michelle and I. And he'll be coming um with his group on September twelfth at ten A M. So, yeah, so I know it's a ways out, but. So, yeah, so I know the ways out, but I still wanted to say it, just so we all pencil that in. And he'll be stopping in to see you many times before, he said.
He, he, yes, he has a lot of good information.
And that's from.
He's with K Works. And um. From what I understand, and I may have told you before, and um, he kind of. Informed me, it's more of a replacement with a carrot, the workman's comp side, we would still have cake camp. Um, but instead of carrot. Um, we would have. K Works and cake, cake camp.
Um. We received another request for ARPA money.
Yes.
And the way I understood it, that we were done taking. Um, ARPA, I mean, that we were closing the window on requests.
Oh, I didn't have that understanding.
I, that's the way I understood it. And.
Quest, I think we're not gonna act like we're a little while. Who are our kind needs to figure out?
Well, and that was another thing, it almost sounded like timing was. Quick, I mean, like, I, I've read it that there would be, almost needed a quick turnaround on that, which.
Yeah, we couldn't do that.
Yeah.
That's.
I mean, so that.
I really wanna button up some of these county numbers so that we.
Absolutely, and.
And that's why I was trying to, you know, for Brian's priority to get some. Numbers.
I agree, and I, I think. This is an excellent example of where we can show, put some money towards economic development, and it's a good thing. But I also think we need to get our numbers all right before we can make a decision.
Well, and if we're talking about outside, like, if they focus has always been county, so if we get our county numbers and have a reserve. And we start talking about outside county, then we need to bring all those applications in that everybody submitted.
Right.
And, and talk through those.
Well. I, I do have a little problem with this one, because it sounds like. The, well. We weren't re. We weren't in on any of the planning, the, the, the projects already been started, and seems like it's already been. Determined by someone else that what's our share, I mean, it's. Uh. The information changed soon as I asked a question, it was that they were having to do the study, and then I asked a question and, oh, it's already been done. And then it was determined that the county is.
I can just light on that. The, they needed the study, and so to get it going. On a timely basis, A E D C. Paid for it upfront to get it rolling. And went back to the request, and it was the city, cause B D A and all. You know, uh, then pay for it, and so, and they agreed to that, and then I, I think what happened, then they realized. Well, I probably should have approached it as a city and the county supporting it. And so it was, it was maybe thought of a little later to include us. But the A E D C actually went in and funded it so that you could get the study going, because there's a time frame on getting to med school and time. There's a, there's a whole series of events that have to happen, and that, you did that study.
Well, I mean, it seemed like it's been. Through that process already, I mean, we've never been approached, there's already, I mean, work has already been going, it's already. Uh, and why wouldn't we have been approached by the EDAG board or Benedictine themselves?
Instead of oversight, I'm saying it was oversight at the time.
I mean, it's, it flags up for me.
Yeah, I, I get that, so. It'll, it'll benefit the Empire County, it's gonna do more housing, it's gonna be more. Population, more tax base and all that. So I can see the argument to include the county. But, but it is, it is a little, you know, the ask, I get, I agree.
Hey, do we have the need for any executive sessions today? Any public comment? Well, we will adjourn our public meeting and go into our workshop.
Maybe a little gap.
Sure.
I can scratch my legs for a minute.
Stretch your legs.
Um, the, it's not work session, it's a special meeting that was scheduled for. For today, it's not just workshop, correct?
It's a, it is a meeting, it's public meeting.
It's just like the last Friday workshop we had. Right?
I, I'm not sure, I don't, I don't recall, I didn't pay that, what, what exactly did you call it? Is that the issue?
Well, I thought it was.
Yeah, I didn't even know we had, you had one. We had no idea that there was one today, so it's not even been posted. But you're not adjourned yet in this meeting, the same, cause you.
Wouldn't just go that zoom and keep going. Just open the paper, you can do that.
Okay.
That, that would work.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sounds good, so.
Can we recess for ten minutes?
Sure.
And come back into.
Do we have to have a motion to recess?
I'll make a motion, we recess for ten minutes.
I'll second it. And moved and seconded, all of them in favor?
Aye, aye.
I, we'll recess for ten minutes. Okay, we are back from our recess. And we are going to um, end the recording and go off Zoom, uh, continue our meeting here at the courthouse in the basement. Uh, for anyone that wants to join us, but go into more of a workshop setting um, with our Roden Bridge team.